Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista, Colorado. The date is April 25th, 2023, and the time is seven o'clock. Please dial out your cell phones if you have them with you. And Paula, would you call the roll, please?
See, Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton Hinka. Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Lucrezi.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
Here.
Trustee Swisher.
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance I have two proclamations to read tonight. I'm gonna start with the challenging one first. This is about Lyme and other tick-borne diseases and conditions Awareness Month. Whereas outdoor activities including walking, hiking, camping, backpacking, mountain biking, hunting, fishing, golfing, gardening, ranching, wood splitting, natural resource management of our vast public lands, and travel for outdoor recreation pursuits puts Buena Vista residents in closer contact with grassy and wooded areas that may be inhabited or infested by ticks, which are carried by both wild and domestic animals. And whereas tick bites can transmit serious and potentially fatal diseases such as Lyme disease, CDC estimated 476,000 new cases annually: Babesiosis, Bartonialosis, Anaplasmosis, Ehrlichiosis, Tularemia, Rocky Mountain Spotted Fever, Colorado Tick Fever, and others that may result initially as fever, rash, or flu-like symptoms, and other symptoms, and can also result in conditions such as tick paralysis or Alpha-Gal meat allergy. And whereas Lyme and other tick-borne diseases and conditions may affect the brain, heart, eyes, joints, and other body organs, and may mimic many other diseases making diagnosis more difficult, whereas the rate of infection in Colorado may be underreported for all tick-borne diseases due to the difficulty of diagnosis. And whereas when Lyme and tick-borne diseases are not quickly and properly diagnosed or treated, it may result in severe illness, disability, or death. And whereas evaluation of veterinary data demonstrates an annually increasing occurrence of Lyme, Anaplasmosis, and Ehrlichiosis in Colorado dogs. And whereas support group participation for Colorado patients afflicted by Lyme and other tick-borne diseases is growing annually. And whereas the best protection against tick-borne diseases is prevention and education, use of insecticide, performance of frequent tick checks, showering immediately upon returning home from outdoor pursuits, proper removal of embedded ticks, prompt diagnosis, and adequate treatment. Therefore, I, Libby Fay, Mayor of Buena Vista, do hereby proclaim forever after May 2023 as Lyme and other tick-borne diseases and conditions Awareness Month.
I think that's the longest one.
Okay, this is a second proclamation. This one is about Historic Preservation Month, May 2023. Whereas the National Trust for Historic Preservation established this celebration in 1973 to promote historic places, instill community pride, encourage heritage tourism, and illustrate the social and economic benefits of historic preservation. And whereas the Buena Vista Historic Preservation Commission, established in 2016, is a group of nine town trustee-appointed members who focus on ways to protect, promote, and advocate for the town's history and the places that make Buena Vista special. And whereas telling the town's stories and protecting the associated places allows everyone to appreciate Buena Vista even more. And whereas historic preservation gives our town another important dimension and shows we honor our heritage. And whereas thousands of people participate annually in Preservation Month celebrations, the Buena Vista Historic Preservation Commission is proud to celebrate May as Historic Preservation Month with its nationally chosen 2023 theme, People Saving Places. And now therefore I, Libby Fay, Mayor of the Town of Buena Vista, do proclaim May 2023 as Historic Preservation Month, and call upon the people of Buena Vista to join their fellow citizens in Colorado and across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observation. Thank you. So the trustees have in front of them the agenda for tonight's meeting. Does anybody have any changes that they'd like to propose in the agenda? Is there a motion to accept the agenda, to pass the agenda as written? Someone?
Second.
So Lucrezi and Swisher? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The agenda is adopted. And now we have what we call the Consent Agenda, which has minutes from various boards and commissions that have met recently, and the town clerk report, an update on the Buena Vita Spirits Liquor Store application, and a report from the planning director and the airport manager. Does anyone have any questions or concerns about anything that's in the consent agenda? Anything that you'd like to pull out and have as a business item? Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? Yes?
Just had a question for Paula on Buena Spirits. I've read all that. It's just pretty much they're just looking for an extension as far as building.
They're not even really looking for an extension. It's been a year ago since we were approved that license. And one of those requirements on that license is that they were required to break ground within a year of that approval, and will be at that year mark on May 9th. And we're really close to them getting their permits, you know, to the point where they're breaking ground. So it was more as an update. We wouldn't come to the board for an extension until this time next year.
I see.
If the license, no, excuse me, if the building wasn't completed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. We have Rowe and Cobb. Owen Faber?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes and the consent agenda is adopted. So now we have reached the part of our meeting that where we invite people to make comments. And you should have signed in when you came in. Great. And I'd like to call first on our younger commenters so that they can speak to us and yet get home because it's a school night. And I have to say that I invited both of them to come because I was so impressed with their speeches that they gave at the National Civics Bee, where the chief of police and I were two of the five judges. So because we're going to talk about tobacco, tobacco ordinance tonight, I thought it would be good for us to hear from the middle school students about vaping. So they'll be speaking to us. They and everyone else should limit their comments to three minutes. And there is only one. No one else has signed up to speak except about the Alpine West development. So I will skip my other comments except to be courteous and respectful. So which of you would like to go first, Paige, or? Okay, Paige, all right. Thank you for coming. I really appreciate it.
I don't really know how to do this, but just gonna talk about it.
So please give your name and your address.
My name is.
For the record.
Okay. My name is Morgan Arnold, and my address is 289 Brier, kind of. Okay, so I talked about vaping in the civics and how it is affecting how our schools like being perceived and looked at. And basically, we did a survey, a bunch of students, about maybe a month ago, and we found that 21% of Salida and Buena Vista students are vaping. And it's really affecting us because it hurts to see all down into this addiction. So that's part of my transition. And then I have friends just because I have friends that vape, and it's always not good to see them going through that either. And yeah, so I chose to do your analysis testing for our school or just any sort of drug testing. And I know that some parents won't really agree to this because of privacy. But yeah, so I just thought that would help.
Thank you very much. There we have another speaker. Just give your name and address for the record.
My name is Paige Landers, and my address is 400 Yonterra Circles. Okay. Um, let's face it, drugs, but in particular vaping, are a huge problem for youths. 7.8 of the BBMS students vape, and that isn't even the high school, but just the middle school. Others are very focused on problems like homelessness, dropouts, and even pollution. While vaping falls into all these categories because if you vape, you will waste more money on vapes instead of saving money for college or just life itself, leaving teens going down the wrong path. High school dropouts are more likely to start vaping or even drop out because of vaping. Once a teen runs out of vape juice or juice in a vape, they will likely toss it on the ground. And when it was warm, I used to walk home and pay attention to how many vapes or vape-related products, such as like pods, chargers, or cases I found on the ground, and the average was about two a day. The nicotine found in most vapes is equal to 50 cigarettes. And vapes have only been around for about 20 years. So our generation are like the test subjects to see the causes of vaping or the long-term effects on our health. And if we have found how bad one pack of cigarettes is, around 10 cigarettes in a pack. Imagine one single vape with an equal amount to around five packs. As these teens with addiction problems begin to grow up, and it will be every role of our community, we need to like act now before it's too late. And I asked some teens from my school on a survey about when they will stop vaping, and their most common responses were New Year's, before I graduate, when my friends do, and if I notice a change in my health, and if it's not now, when? Um, I think a solution would be to put vape detectors, vape detectors in school, suspension when caught vaping, which we already do, but and offer a free rehab program. And I know a lot of adults in my life that would like speak to some of them or start a program, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate y'all coming out on short notice, too. Mr. Teldhorse? Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Alex Teldhorse. My address is 28872 County Road 330. I just swung by this evening to touch base and say, hey, still here, Alpine West, still going strong. Joseph and I have been working through a bunch of issues on my project that that are currently keeping my project from moving forward at the county. And I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe back in December or January, as I was applying, working with the town to move forward, you guys asked me to pause.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't start that appropriately.
Sounds like, oh. Asked me to pause my application process for my water main extension agreement with the town to allow the town to get up speed on the water issues as they are today. So I've been attending and following the conversations, and I appreciate you guys spent as much time as you have getting up speed on the water issues because they're a big deal for our community. And so following kind of where the tracking of where you guys have gotten to, it seems that it's that you're, that the water that I'm proposing to bring to town to serve my project, to work with you with your water system, that there's, there seems to be understanding that that's a good water source and that there should be, we should be able to move forward with that. So I'm just here tonight to request to say, can I come and update you on the project? So that has, so we can do that in parallel, but as we make decisions about the water, we can be ready to move forward as quickly as possible. I got my first round, my unanimous approval from the county commissioners in October, and then, you know, recorded in November. And so it's May next week, so I'm just waiting for you guys. And so I'd appreciate the opportunity to come and tell you about it and have some forward progress. Okay.
Thank you very much. Mr. Wan, did you want to speak now as well as at the time of your appeal?
I'll speak if appealed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Well, that concludes public comment, then. Yeah, is there anyone on Zoom?
I'm seeing hands raised, so I think we're good.
Okay. All right, great. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Bye.
Bye, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, now we have staff reports with the town treasurer starting out.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Good to see you all again. My report starts, my reports start on page 36 of your packet. It's that, it's that month where we've got a monthly report and a quarterly report. So apologize for all the pages in your packet, but that's what we got. So the monthly report starts on page 36. A couple of things that I wanted to highlight tonight. The first is the disposable bag fee collection and process that was put in place over the last few weeks by the town. This is a state-of-Colorado law that was passed and enacted and kind of pushed down to the municipalities to serve as the agencies for collection and enforcement. So with the help of Paula and Lillian, we put together what I think is a pretty solid, simple process. It's on our website on the finance page. And we reached out to the businesses that we know are impacted by this law. It's really the larger businesses with four or more locations. So pretty easy to count those on one hand. But so pretty interesting, but it's, if you all have experienced that, it's, and you forgot your reusable bags at the grocery store, it's the 10 cents per bag. And so, yeah, town has a role in that, come to find out. So that's good news. We've got that up and going, and we've already, already had several businesses submit their first quarter reports. So it seems to be working so far. In the end, it really is meant to transition away completely from plastic bags, which will be next year when the businesses will have very limited to no ability to even sell the bags. So seems to be a good step in the right direction for our state. So happy to take any questions around that if you have any. Again, trying to keep a tally on the puts and takes for our budget, and you'll see that table is growing mostly from cleanup items and/or grants that continue to come in. So good news, but we have to keep an eye on those and make sure that we prepare for a mid-year budget adjustment to account for all of that. So I'm not going to go through any of those. Those are pretty self-explanatory, but happy to answer any questions related to that. Grants, I'm not going to steal anyone's thunder, but I'll just say this table is already out of date because things continue to flow through the grant review process, and we find out news daily, weekly these days. So good stuff there, but anyway, summary of our grant situation on that. Page 38 is a look at the February sales tax that came in. Another, you know, strong month consistent with January. About 9%, over budget for the month of February. And you can kind of see the breakdown there of the split between local and remote business results. And then, you know, kind of a look of the payments we've made since our last meeting. I will pause there before mentioning a few things in the quarterly report. Are there any questions related to the monthly report?
Do you want to go back to the disposable bag fee? Do you have any projections on what that might be, look like coming in revenue wise?
In terms of revenue?
Yeah.
Minimal?
Minimal.
Minimal, I would say probably by quarter, we're looking at maybe $1,000.
And this goes into the general fund?
It does. The intent is for 60% of the collections to go to the municipalities. 40% are retained by the businesses. For the municipalities, it's really the, it's really to be used for things related to reducing plastics. So that could be education, could be recycling. The town does contribute, contribute to the county efforts around recycling and/or mitigation strategies for our landfill, which is just over 15,000 a year. So it's pretty easy to kind of point to how these funds that are, that we're taking in can help offset that. But I don't see this as a significant revenue source for us. It's really getting, just transitioning the state away from plastic. So we'll get a few thousand over the year, but not really enough to do much with.
Yeah, you answered my question I said this morning, where it was going to go. And it sounds like it's going to be twice. Stay, stay into that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? No?
Okay. Quarterly report, first quarter report starts on page 60. The main thing I wanted to highlight from this is on page 63, pages 63 and 64 are kind of the first look at our fund balances for 2023. So page 63 is just a look at the end of first quarter, how do our funds look? And so it's, it's an interesting look. It just, you know, the main thing is there that we're positive. We have enough money in the bank. None of the funds are out of whack with our budget, things like that. So no surprises jump out at me on that page. 64 is a projection for the end of the year, and that's really the one that's of, I think, should be interest, of interest to the board because that, again, that last column is the projected unrestricted fund balance for each fund, which is, you know, the board's ability and flexibility to spend on one-time projects, which we've been doing quite a bit of in recent years to acknowledge that. But this, this takes into account the budget plus all of the things that have happened in first quarter, the actuals we've received, revenues, the actual expenses, plus any things that we're aware of. So for instance, we're aware of some additional grant funding. So assumptions are kind of baked into this projection report. So again, things look healthy across, you know, mainly our general fund and our water fund. And our water fund, we've got to watch pretty closely because we are spending quite a bit of money right now towards our water, water projects. So we're looking at about 1.6 million in unrestricted fund balance in the water fund at the end of the year, which is where I would hope we would be at this point. So that's, that's looking good. There's a lot of other things in there, but those were the main points that jumped out at me. Happy to take any questions.
Great. Any questions on the projections? Thank you. You have a good crystal ball. So that's the end of your report?
It is.
Great. Thank you very much. So now we have the Recreation Supervisor, Shane Bassford.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. My report starts on page 80 of the packet there. Busy couple months for the Rec Department for sure. And we'll start off with some some good, good news, but you know, still just a step of the process. So we submitted our Community Impact Grant Application to GoCo on March 20th. And then April 12th, we were notified that their peer reviewers and staff have recommended our project for full funding. So still, Earl, Leslie, and I have a presentation with the GoCo Board of Programs on May 11th. And then the final decision will be made by their board directors on June 14th. So not official yet, but a very good and large step to potentially getting funding for our project. And so that'd be about 750,000, what's looking at about a $1.3 million park. So pretty good chunk of it funded by that grant. And then we're also hoping that that grant, we can leverage that grant to get a few other additional grants. So where the budget for that project is sitting right now is still, you know, about somewhere between $100,000 and $150,000 short, even with GoCo funding. So we've been working on securing a number of smaller grants, like through the Gates Family Foundation, the Next 50 Initiative. We've got El Palmar Foundation grant due in May. So trying to piece together some smaller grants to get to that, you know, final number where we're fully funded for our project and can potentially start your construction this year if everything goes right. On the programming side of our department. Tucker and Caitlin have had a little bit of assistance recently with you know, us bringing Annie on board as the facilities assistant. We've transitioned Jenny Depew to our program assistant. So she is now going to be working more on the program side of things, which is great timing actually, as Caitlin had to get a knee replacement. And Tucker is currently in Europe. So we've been making do as a department for the last, you know, handful of weeks with staff members being out for various reasons, some a lot more fun than others. But Jenny's enjoying being on the program side of things and actually, you know, getting out of the office and, you know, helping us paint fields and run youth soccer and all that good stuff. And Earl has been busy on a number of projects, particularly in the River Park. If you guys have noticed, there's a picture in the packet of the new five panel kiosk that just got completed. The construction was completed, I believe, in the fall, and then we just finished getting all of the inserts printed and installed. A lot of people contributed to that project, but a couple new new maps there for users in the River Park. And then they we found out today that the contractor that is doing the work on the Whipple Trail, they backed their machine out today. They're going to wrap up tomorrow with just some hand tools and things like that. But they are wrapping up that work on the Whipple Trail early. If you guys haven't been up there, definitely recommend going and check it out when it stops snowing and raining outside. There's a few new dedicated routes to the river, a couple of good viewpoints that, you know, people can actually like go off the trail, take a picture, not block the trail. And as a whole, you know, the whole trail, the goal is to get that whole section six feet wide. So safer, you know, kind of corridor trail for people. And then we're potentially going to use that contractor to do some work on some other projects that we have needed. As I mentioned last time, I was before you all. We were awarded our O N E T grant, but not quite to, but that was only partial funding and we're, we have to jump through a lot of hoops to get that grant funding because it's federal funding. So environmental review and all sorts of good stuff like that. But we're potentially going to use that contractor to do a little bit of work on the rock and roll trail before summer. You know, with the goal of not having a giant hole in our rock and roll trail going into summer. And so we thought that'd be a good, good use as the contractor wrapped up early on the Whipple projects. But we still are planning to get those project, those O N E T grant projects completed this year, those projects being the Rock and Roll Trail, the Boathouse bathroom upgrades, boat ramp rehabilitation in the Whipple Bridge decking replacement. Still on track to get all those completed this year. Just probably not going to start any of those until the fall, which would probably be about the soonest the funding would be available for this. And I'm open to any questions anybody might have.
Questions for Shane?
No, just congrats on moving forward in the grant.
Thank you. We were nervous about that one.
Thank you, Shane. Okay, now we have a public hearing, but it's not the appeal with the boroughs. This is a public hearing. I'll call the public hearing to order. And this has to do with the rededication of North Evans Street. And in this case, there's, there's really not an applicant other than the town. And the town is the respondent basically too. So I think that Joseph, are you speaking to this?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Before you, for consideration, is the dedication of North Evans Street. It's it's sort of a rededication, but legally it's just a dedication. So I want to walk through the very basics, but you have the detail in your packet starting on number, page number eighty six. So I won't go into all of that detail, but I'm happy to answer questions. This is a relatively familiar oddity to you all. You all recently heard a similar dedication of right of way with portions of Cedar Street and South Main Street as we platted these eight part lots. So as with that and with this, they're both the same in the sense that there's a minor subdivision happening. We're actually plating a private property which is owned by town. That minor subdivision is administrative approval. And the subdivision itself is still administrative approval. However, state statute requires that when there's a dedication of right of way, the board, the governing body, is the one that needs to accept that dedication. So before you is very specifically the question of should should the town or should you all accept North Evans Street as right of way? Separately and contingent upon your decision will be Lisa's review of the minor subdivision, a lot consolidation of the town owned lots that are mentioned in the statute. So I just want to call that distinction that you're not considering a minor subdivision because our code says that's an administrative approval. You all are considering acceptable right of way. So again, starting on page eighty six and maybe moving to page eighty seven. A couple of visuals of what we're talking about. You all are familiar with the tennis courts and the new pickleball courts with what used to be Newby's thrift store. North Evans Street used to exist as a right of way between those two pieces. So it's seventy five foot wide street back when town was platted originally in eighteen seventy nine, there was North Evans Street. Almost right away in our town's history in eighteen ninety seven, that right of way was vacated to make way for, as I tried to include in your packets, some of those historical minutes point to a smelter factory. So there was a desire from previous town board, you know, a hundred and thirty years ago or so to have a smelter in that location instead of a road. And so North Evans Street was vacated. Over the years, obviously, further streets in that area like Chestnut Street and the associated alleys were also vacated to make room for every person's elementary school. So town owns on the on the screen right now, which is page eighty seven. You can see the red outline is more or less the town owned lots, which is lots eleven through twenty two of block twenty six of the original town plat, Beavis. So together with some vacated portions of alleys there is the blue outline dotted outline is a representation more or less of where we want to rededicate or legally dedicate a new North Evans Street. There are a variety of reasons for this request. As you all know, you all have kind of given a head nod to moving forward with working with the school district on a potential partnership or using those town owned lots or public parking and potentially shared parking with the school district. If that project continues to move forward. But in order for vehicles to access that, there needs to be a right of way. And for the old Newby's thrift store lot, if that were to ever redevelop, our code does not allow for new driveway access directly off of Main Street. Again, we're trying to promote pedestrian access to Main Street, not vehicles turning in and out of Main Street. So if that property were to develop, they would have no vehicular access without an Evans Street. So by dedicating Evans Street, not only do we gain access to our own parcels, we also allow for the development of the old Newby's property by giving them a street access off of a Main Street by which to access the property. Finally, this also gives us opportunities to consider other benefits to River Park more generally in the form of not only parking, as we've mentioned, but Earl and Shane have been working on creating Walton Loop as an ADA trail that that goes around much of River Park. Well, the most logical place for that ADA connection to Main Street would be to come down what is proposed to be Evans Street next to the pickleball courts and tennis courts and connect to Main Street. In addition, obviously, with the pickleball court addition, there's need for more parking. There's an opportunity with a wide right, right of way or seventy five foot wide right of way to think about things like perhaps diagonal parking, head in parking like we have on on two blocks of Main Street. But also sidewalks, streets gave vehicular access, all those types of pieces. So that's really what's before you tonight separately considered will be the consolidation of that red outlined area into one lot for for town purposes. But before you is is a question of should we or should we not accept right of way of Evans Street? I mean, zoning commission has heard this same topic and has recommended that you all accept the right of way. I think I'll stop there and I'm happy to answer any questions that might happen.
Do the trustees have questions for Joseph or any other staff member?
So for tonight, we're just looking at approving the right of way and then the other question I have isn't that we'd have to then develop the street and everything else would be a new budget point. So I'm just assuming that'd be down the road, but then taking into consideration, this is just for the legal classification of right of way.
Absolutely. So so your decisions tonight would help create a legal definition of a right of way. It would not be allocating a budget. It would not be approving the design for that right of way, what it would look like. Those are all future decisions by both public works, planning, administration, and and potentially in concert with the school district, right, depending on how that project progresses.
Other questions or comments, trustees? Then I'd like to open this to public comment. Are there any members of the public who are here or on Zoom who would like to comment on this? Did you check Zoom?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Annie. Hearing no comments. I'd like to close the public comment period. So I think that we're at the point where we would deliberate among ourselves and then make a decision on this. Is there any deliberation? I would accept a motion to to allow this.
Mayor, sorry, I should have, I should have added that that your formal motion tonight would be to pass resolution number twenty seven. And that resolution would accept that that right of way.
And I'll make a motion to approve resolution number twenty seven.
Second. We have Rowan Cobb. Let's do a roll call, please, Paul. Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
I see the courtesy. Yes. Trustee Rowan.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much to the staff and board seeing that that the minutes are interesting, all the handwritten minutes that are in our package.
Yeah, no kidding.
Glad I don't have to write that. No one would ever be able to read it. Okay. So we're going on now to business items. The first item, it has to do with an or a proposed ordinance which would deal with the possession of tobacco products and e-cigarettes by persons under eighteen years of age. And the question is whether the board of trustees would like to approve the adoption of ordinance number nine, series twenty twenty three entitled An Ordinance of the Town of Beano Vista, Colorado, adding a new section ten dash two fifty eight to the Beano Vista Municipal Code concerning the possession of tobacco products by persons under eighteen years of age. And who is the staff person?
So Dean has, Chief Morgan has included a report in your packet. But just to kind of overview this, we did have a work session on this to discuss sort of what thoughts of you all are having on the potential change to that ordinance when we came to sort of the conclusion of eighteen as that age at that time that might be recommended. And so as directed, Eagle Town Attorney Jeff Parker and Dean and I have all crafted that ordinance for you. And that's part of your packet as well. And so it basically just lowered that limit of that type of tobacco product to the age eighteen. And I know Jeff is on as well. So Jeff, if you wanted to carry it away from there.
Yeah, I don't have much more to add to that. My, the ordinance that you see in front of you is basically based on the direction that I believe we were given during the work session. Right now, it's a violation to sell tobacco products to anybody under twenty one. And then I believe the board of trustees wanted to make it a violation for anybody under eighteen to possess, to possess them. And so instead of trying to meld the possession prohibition into like the sales or into the sales code section, I just created a new code section. I think it's a little simpler to read. And so all this does is basically make it a municipal code violation to possess tobacco products if you're under eighteen. And that would include vape vape products and all kinds of nicotine delivery devices. So pretty much anything you can think of that is is of that ilk.
Thanks, Jeff. So Jeff, would the penalties for this be the same as those under the section ten two fifty seven?
Yeah, the penalties are just your general penalties subject under the municipal code. So your general municipal penalties provide for I guess they have a juvenile section in there. I don't have it in front of me, but it would be very similar, although it would apply to juveniles because it's it's basically only a violation for people who are under eighteen. So I have to pull that up, but typically in a municipal court, you, the judge would have some kind of a standard sort of schedule and he would basically be able to offer, I think Dean talked about this last, last meeting. Your chief talked about how they try and do like sort of a, like a diversion, you know, restorative justice type program to try and try and convince the kids not to do this any further. It wouldn't be the kind of thing that would actually get jail time. But your general penalty does allow for that. I'm just trying to pull it up quickly while we're talking, but I'm not sure exactly how your code reads for juveniles. But it would be the same kind of penalties for other offenses for juveniles under your code.
Okay, and I I remember Chief Morgan saying that the courts aren't likely to use the full power of those penalties, I guess, to offenders, but I guess there's a part of it that niggles at me that how can that be guaranteed? I'm not sure what the harshest of of those penalties would be. But I guess I worry and where I'm coming from is that and I'm not necessarily opposing this. I just want to understand if that kind of thing better. Because I think it's pretty well documented that the marketing, tobacco marketing has kind of unfairly targeted kids and especially kids from low income families and kids of color and LGBTQ kids and that kind of thing. And I I would hate to, I mean, I think that's changing due to some lawsuits, but I would just be concerned about marginalizing some of these kids or shaming them. And also if this ordinance could jeopardize their ability to get some kind of federal funding or scholarship to college or or result in a criminal record that could could deny them some opportunities.
Yeah, that's a really good question. So you know, the the other option you have would be to basically specify the penalties in this ordinance itself. So it's subject to its own specific penalties. And you know, you could basically, you could put in some kind of a like a gradated penalty scheme, or you could just say to a penalty of of no greater than X amount of dollars or something. Or community service or something like that. We could, we could update it to do that. I'd have to look. I don't want to do it on the fly because I, when I find a ring these things, it gets a little bit messy because I'm, I'm reading your your penalty code right now while I'm talking to you and
Yeah.
I'm not totally clear exactly how it works to I'm not totally clear exactly how it works to people who are eight under eighteen. So I'd have to. If you wanted to do that, we could specify that, although. And I guess it would technically be a criminal violation, but most juvenile type violations are sealed in most cases. So I don't.
Sealed, okay.
Well, but there's certain circumstances. The laws have changed in that recently too. So I I'm not going to give you good off the cuff advice on that. But I think it's I think it's a very legitimate consideration. You don't want somebody to have a criminal record if they're applying for college because they had a vape pin in their pocket, right?
Right, right. And I wonder if we could just pause on this and and have Jeff research it more and then. Just see what might be possible. And then I would also like. It sounds like we already tried to help them through into some kind of cessation, smoking cessation. Program or something like that as well. So just would like to understand more of the steps there, what we do for education and. To really try to support them and whether it's there's a financial cost to that. And I'll tell you, I come from a family of smokers. My mother died of lung cancer. I have three siblings that are suffering lots of health issues from having started smoking in their teens. So. Definitely don't want to see kids take up smoking, but also just want to make sure we're not kind of marginalizing some and preventing opportunity. Through some penalties that some unintended consequences, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, if the rest of the town Lord wants to follow that lead, we could basically come back with some kind of a specified provision that would maybe limited to some kind of a fine. And or community service and or restorative justice type program or a some kind of coursework or something. It's totally up to the board, but um that might be more in line with the severity of this offense.
And certainly I don't know if Chief Morgan or Superintendent Gates are on tonight, but you could there input as well.
I didn't see Chief Morgan on.
Okay.
So. I was actually kind of expecting him to be here. So anyways, there's things that come up, obviously.
Sure. Yeah.
So but I think it would be very helpful if maybe you could tell us what sort of. Penalties you want to see. That might be helpful for us as we're crafting this.
Well, I I honestly haven't thought it through to that extent because I think they clearly wanted some teeth in in this that they don't have.
Yeah.
And so I support that, but. I don't know. I don't know if we could check with other communities or if.
I think.
Jeff seemed to have some good ideas there.
Yeah.
Don't mind Sue just jumping over here saying, I think. The main thing for me, just thinking through what you said is not having a honor like. A record of any form, you know, because I think Jeff, you said you don't quite know if that is gonna. It's, you know. Because yeah, I mean, you make mistakes is getting. You don't want that to impact you down. I mean, obviously making a mistake of taking up smoking also has an impact down the road, but. I don't think we want to be taking part in that. So just making sure there isn't some sort of record that this ties into, but it's more of a. Yeah, I think when they were talking or when Chief Morris talked about they want to tease like they can confiscate from that statement. Right? So it's being able to confiscate and take materials because they just didn't have that in there unless they were on school property, but they couldn't do if they're off school property.
But part of it too is to get the family involvement, which would be accomplished by bringing them into court.
Mark?
Another thought. Jump on Sue's thing there. You know, I think about consequences. Maybe have something in there, maybe free strikes, you know, kind of have a system. Or if you're a repeat offender, maybe if you're not really taking this seriously, maybe maybe there is some consequence. Instead of oh, you can just keep doing whatever you want and we'll slap your hand and move down the road. I mean, by the time you're eighteen, you should start accepting consequences, I think. And maybe that might be part of the language too, as far as keeping track of that. Somebody's not paying attention to. Getting a little rougher at the end or something. I don't know. Just a thought.
Do you know comments?
Um, no, I agree with both Sue and Mark. And Peter as well, like. Be ashamed to have something if it was like a first time offense, you know, that it wasn't sealed or something. It could affect their opportunity like. Hate for that to be a reason why something doesn't work out. I so agree that they do this multiple times that. Then there I think, yes, there should be responsibility taken by by the person because at some point, I mean, that's how life works. You have to take responsibility for the things you do. So I I'm in favor of potentially coming up with. Kind of a.
Like an escalation.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, the court itself would almost certainly have a program where they where we do that. A lot of times when you have like a first offender come in. Particularly when it's a juvenile, you'll basically give them the option of doing some community service or doing a restorative justice program or taking some kind of a course. And then it's basically it was called like a deferred judgment or even deferred prosecution. We just basically. They don't do it again in six or six months. It's just dismissed. So. You know, if you give if you don't, if you don't get too caught up in specifying all the details, you just basically specify like a maximum penalty that would keep this from being a criminal offense. Court that they want to have leeway to work with the prosecutor and police department and to have some reasonable type of. Program that people would go through for these violations. So. I I guess my thought would be maybe we should just reduce the maximum penalty to something that's more of a civil offense versus a criminal offense. And then let the court work out a reasonable program for dealing with these types of offenses. And I bet you won't have any kind of serious issues with anybody going to jail or getting a criminal offense for having a vape pen.
Was that a thousand dollars, Jeff, or?
It's five. It's a four ninety nine is is sort of the limit. You know, no jail time and a maximum fine of four ninety nine is considered to be basically a civil offense in certain situations, but we could. I want to look at the way your code's set up right now just to make sure I'm not doing anything that would give some kid a criminal record, but. And then and then the court could basically work to have sort of a maybe even with school district input, like here's what we're going to do for these situations. Here's our program for these violators and they'll. First step is you get a deferred, you know, judgment, do a class. Second step, second violation. You gotta do community service. Third violation, you're going to have a civil offense, pay some money, you know. I think the courts have a lot of ability to do that. I'm not sure you need to specify it in the in the code.
So. Let me defer this to a date certain where where it would come back to us.
Yeah, if you bring it back maybe your next meeting, what I could do is talk with chief and look at. Your penalty penalty provisions in your code and come up with maybe a. Just like a maximum penalty that might just give the court enough leeway to create their a reasonable program. And maybe the chief could talk about what he thinks would work and then. It would be a little simpler, I think, than you trying to specify every step of the way because that's what courts are pretty good at.
You'd be a minimal to that, Sue?
Yes, yes. Thank you all for entertaining that.
Mark, you okay with that?
Yes.
You're. So. All right. Shent to to defer that.
That would be helpful.
Okay, would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. So you have Swisher Cobb. You have the motion, okay? All right. Great, thank you all.
Right. We'll just shoot to have it back to you at your next meeting. If for some reason it takes longer, we can. This is a lot of hearing issues. We'll just bring it back to you at another meeting for you to deal with, so.
Okay, let's have a vote on that motion, please. All in favor?
I.
Any opposed? And the motion passes. Right. So we are now on item B, which is. Has to do with the Buena Vista pack borough race special event appeal. And I'd like to be clear about what this is. Mister Juan has asked for an appeal. Of the administrators and, you know, via the rec department. Conditional. Permit that has been granted to Mister Juan. So this is a hearing that he has asked for. So so he will speak to us. And. We can speak to the matter. So this isn't an argument about who's the better person to be running the race. It's it's about did we follow our own law? As stated in our municipal code. So. I'd like to turn it over, I think, to is it to your Lisa or is it to Jeff?
Jeff, maybe give us a little bit of guidance procedurally too, I think would be good.
Yeah, if you don't mind, that'd be great. So just to set the stage of how this how this works. So this is this is a hearing, but it's not a public hearing. It's basically an appeal hearing. And so the process is basically to listen to Mister Juan's position regarding why the town administrator. Erred in basic in rejecting his application for a permit on a specific day. And instead providing other dates as a condition of an approval. So essentially. Mister Juan applied for a permit to conduct the pack borough race on a certain day. Town administrator concluded via staff representatives that 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 date doesn't did not work for the town and I'll let I'll let them both discuss the reasons why. And she basically offered a different date. Instead of rejecting it, she offered a different date that she could approve it. That that would allow her to approve it. And instead of accepting that different date, Mister Juan has chosen, which is his right to do, to appeal her decision to the town board. And the real the consideration of the town board is did town administrator correctly apply the town code in making that decision? And so the process is generally to hear from Mister Juan. He can present his arguments, explain to the the town board why error was made and why his. Permit should have should have been approved for that specific date. And then the town administrator or representative can respond, providing her reasons for her decision. And then Mister Juan will have an opportunity to basically, you know, reply one more time to address anything that the town administrator. Said, and as the board of trustees, you're acting kind of like a court of appeals here. You're perfectly allowed allowed to ask questions. Of either Mister Warner or Miss Parnell Rowe during their presentations. If you have some questions, you're free to do that. If you have procedural or legal questions, just ask me and I can I can provide some guidance hopefully. And then when it's done, you basically will. Discuss amongst yourselves what the appropriate decision is. And make a final decision regarding Mister Juan's appeal. So and as Lisa said, or it's basically not to look at the other application because that wasn't appealed. It's just Mister Juan's appeal. And you're looking at the town code. And just so you're clear, I'm going to direct you to the appropriate provisions in the town code. It deals with special event permits. And so it is in staff's presentation, but section eleven dash one twenty three. Basically lays out the criteria for when a special event permit can be denied. And so what it basically says is is that. The town administrator should approve a special event permit. Unless any of the criteria are determined to be present that are set forth in eleven dash one twenty three. And so if any of those factors are met, then the town administrator can deny a permit. And there's another subsection, subsection B of that, that says that if the town administrator is going to deny the permit. She has an obligation to offer other conditions that if accepted by the applicant would allow her to grant the permit. So that's essentially sort of the framework of what happened in this situation. So that's pretty much what I've got for you. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have anything and feel free to ask me questions during the hearing if you have any.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
Good evening. My name is Brad Wong. Do I need to give my address? Do you need that?
Would you like his address, Paula?
We're okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Well, number one, I want to thank each and every one of you for having me here this evening. I've been borough racing for fifteen years now. I have managed many and many dozens and dozens of races up to about a hundred. I have trained personally over eighty six boroughs. And I have owned four world champions and one triple crown winner. I have been involved in one of the greatest sports on planet Earth. I have been front row seat and have been had a great privilege and honor to meet some of the greatest people, hardest working, dedicated athletes you can ever imagine. So I definitely appreciate the opportunity to have a conversation this evening about this great sport. So we are appealing the decision. And we'd just like to discuss it. We had three topics, why we would like to appeal it. The number one topic is lack of notice. So. As a committee. We had like to train all those around us. So in case one goes down, one can take over. That's what committees do. So we asked Lindsay to take over in twenty twenty two between the town and the committee. She was our in between. And so which everybody was stoked about. Everyone knew her. She's in town and did a phenomenal job. She started approaching the town in January of twenty twenty two. Eager to turn in the permits. We had all our maps done. We are already got our BLM permits paid for. We've already had our conversations with the county. We've already paid our permits with the county. But we can't seem to get our permit through the town. She came up here and testified on the twenty eighth of last month and explained in great detail. Exactly what was going on there, that she was just asked to hold off until thirty days before the race. So a lack of notice is really what it's about. The fact that we weren't brought into the conversation that things are changing, that you want it different. Because if we'd have known, we'd have just filled it out. Now, would we have filled it out on race day when I'm concerned about when our committee is more concerned about safety? And making sure animals are safe. Everyone has food and water. Our trails are cleaned up. I think that's a little unfair to ask a race, an event who's responsible for lives and souls. To be worried about their next event on the day of their event. So on the day of my event, another application was turned in. That application was to take over, directly take over our event. Okay, so we we have documentation of that in front of you. So lack of notice is basically. Explaining the fact that we just wish we'd had a conversation with the town. We wish we'd have known that the things were changing as much as they did. We found out on August first of twenty twenty two that Ben was residing and leaving town. That was all news to us. I I'm trying to remember when we found that out. We had no idea who was going to take over or when. I believe I made a phone call to the mayor and it was explained that there's an application process. There's many people that are applying. And that there's a really great lineup of people that are very, very interested in doing the job. Our issues here aren't with anybody. We are not upset. We are not. We don't have any animosity. We we just want a race. We want to hold history. We we want to have fun and put smiles on faces, but more than anything, we want to be safe. We want to carry the traditions. This will be my this will be our committee's eighth year of producing this race. This race has seen many different shapes and sizes. And we are on the verge of breaking records and becoming something outside of just a pack girl race in Colorado. We're on the verge of possibly becoming an Olympic sport. So there's a lot of irons in the fire. There are a lot of things going on. We almost pulled off a race in France this year. So it's not just a small niche sport anymore. All eyes are on us. All attention is on us and how we behave and how we function. And so the second for the question we had in our appeal is the frustration of purpose. So we took a look at the. The actual municipal code. And we just find it that it's difficult to maneuver through as a race director. Doesn't matter what the race is. We could be doing toilet seat races on East Main. If there's an event permit pulled. What are you asking of your event planners? Are we supposed to already have everything in line for a permit to be turned in the day of our race? It's it's the code is there, but it should also be protecting events. That are actually in they have standing. We have standing. We've created, you know, relationships with sponsors, with towns, with the porta potty companies, you know, with our insurance agent. We've created all these, you know, partnerships so that we have a safe event. So how do we as event holders, and I'm worried about other events because if this becomes normal, what's going to happen to Coliseum Peaks? On May sixth, when they have their races, someone would be filing while that race director is out there working hard. And that committee that puts on that wonderful, beautiful race. Are they going to be worried that there's going to be another person who just wants to take it away from them? Even though they worked hard, they've done everything asked of them. But how do we have standing? There should be something in the code. We're not arguing. There should be something in the code. We're not arguing about how the code was read. We're arguing the fairness of it. You know, the, the actual frustration that we go through as race directors needs to be hopefully looked at and investigated. And we urge you guys to please take some time out and take a look at what this does to all these sports and all these events. It actually will affect us and how we function if we're worried about who's coming in behind us. Some of these races have been going on for a long time. I know the Buena Vista race has been here since the seventies. It's a big deal and it brings in great revenue every year. And we really work hard and that is really our purpose. Our purpose is to collect the history and create the tax dollars for the towns in which we run in. That is our job and to keep everyone safe. That's the animal and the human. And we have done that successfully year after year. So we are looking at the impossibility of the code working out for the other applicant. And the reason is, is because we did what we were always told to do. And that is go get your other permits first. You will probably take a look at your own. Everyone has like an employee guide, right? So all employees have a guide, then they tell you somewhere in that guide, because I've heard it. I haven't read it because I don't have access to it, but there has to be something in that guide that says that you have to have all your other stuff. It's called a conditional permit. It's conditionally given to you. Even in the email given to the other permit holder, it is conditionally given to them. Now, the difference between my permit or my permit with the BLM and the town permit is I have a five-year permit with BLM. How does the town give a permit to someone else knowing that another event has a five-year permit with another event planner who has been running that said event for eight years? Our committee has been managing this event for eight years and we've had standing, good standing. We've never been reprimanded. We've never had a negative email. We've never been pulled in and asked questions. We've never been told we've been irresponsible or we didn't clean up our trail. And in your packet that I handed out to you, you will see, we just wanted to kind of prove to you, here behind my award for race director of the year for two thousand and twenty and twenty-one from the, the Western Pack Borough Association gave me an award, which was pretty cool in two thousand and twenty-one. You will see in here, these are just comments made between me and the people I work with to get my race off the ground. Now, I didn't put them all in here. This thing would be an inch thick because we communicate. And the best part of communication is you find holes in your plan. You repair things that are broken and you, you solve problems. So communication is key. But you'll see here where people from the time I started this and this committee has been involved in this, you will see that we have worked really, really hard to have great relationships with the town. I have never had a negative interaction with the town. Ever. Not the police department, any code enforcement, and we've worked very, very hard to keep that. So we wanted to make sure that you guys saw a little bit of it. And I know not all the email is in here. I just wanted you to kind of see, you know, the nature of my and our committee's involvement with the town and how it worked. You know, when you see things like your permit is attached, I will see you this weekend. You see Earl saying, Brad, so much great press going on for Gold Rush Days. Should be the best ever. So, I mean, these are great words coming from Earl again on, in two thousand and nineteen. Hi there. Great job on the borough race. You know, we, we communicate. We work with the chamber. And we've done some really great things. Here's Ben. Hi Brad. Thank you for submitting your well-thought-out and detailed plan. Plans are not easy to write. Not everyone can write them. And I wrote one in two thousand and twenty that maneuvered through your codes, your health department codes, the county codes, the CDPH's codes, the governor's orders. And we wrote that plan as a committee. And it wasn't just us. Nothing like our event happens, happens because of one person. It takes an army to pull something like this off. So when you see one person standing up, know that they are held up by dozens of people to make things like this happen. So we have this great communication. Had no idea that there were issues at all. I understand that's not the purview of what we're talking about here, but we've also dug in with the town. In two thousand and twenty-one, we reached out to Ben and we asked basically for a, a, an action report on how things went. You know, a letter, you know, or something. He assured us that we would get together and talk about it. And so that's here in the back, the last two pages. You'll see one of our committee persons, my wife, who reached out to him. So we try to do our diligence because you can make mistakes. How do you get better? Is by finding out what your flaws are, working on them and making yourself and your team better every year. So having a consistent team running it that's willing to step up because folks, none of this is easy. It's not just paperwork. We're marking trails until two AM in the morning. We're knocking poop off the trail and cleaning things up days after. We're organizing and hauling water and hey, this is not a go-kart race where I can load them up in a trailer and and just unload them and let everyone go and have fun. This is something where our committee works extremely hard to pull off a safe event. And, and I need your code to help us reflect that. And I need your code to help us as event people because every event in this town after today will be at jeopardy of losing their event. This is new. I can't find anything like it anywhere. Talk to BLM. Not familiar with someone allowing someone else to step on something that exists. This is unusual territory. This is not normal. And if there's an issue with someone, please talk to us. Please come to us. Allow us to grow. Allow us to apologize. Allow us to be humble and, and come to you so that we can be a part of this community. The team I have put together, Richard Eman, this man has hung more sheet rock in this town than probably any other human. If you look at a building, he probably slapped the rock on it. Blackburl Bikes, phenomenal company. Cass, Nate, these folks design things for you and help you guys make your businesses better. They are, they are Buena Vista. Amber Wong owns, my wife owns a wedding business where we take donkeys to weddings right here in BD and put smiles on faces. My race itself, the Buena Vista Pack Girl Race is a business. It's not just a sport. This is a full-fledged business. It's an LLC. And we do that to try to protect everyone because every event is susceptible to suit. Someone could trip over a brick and really, will the insurance cover it all? My house, things I own, my retirement, it's all in jeopardy. We tried to protect it, but can we really? So if you step up as a race director, think about the liability and the things you take on and the things you can lose when things go wrong. So third and final, in the packet, there's another one, much thicker. And I know this isn't about the other applicant, but this is a timeline, folks. This is, this is really how things work and how things happened and how we got to where we are today. The reason this is impossible to happen in the permit, it's a conditional permit. You cannot get his other permits. It cannot happen. So Sean Reynolds from the Bureau of Land Management has written a letter. And this letter was written on April third, two thousand and twenty-three. So this is a big packet. It says timeline right across the top. First page. So it's regarding your request to propose a new event in August using BLM trails. We are not able to accept an application for another event in August. I don't even know if I have to keep reading, folks. The reason I got my BLM permits first is because that is where you go. You get your surrounding permits first because I can get through town. We can work things out here, but if BLM has locked in with another trail company or another great event and I have missed my boat, you have to get those done. If the county is doing road maintenance, how do I have a race out of town? I did things as I was told to do them. And it shows because I'm still holding a permit that I will not release. The federal government cannot release. There's no way out of it. There are only two permits for June, July, and August. And our committee holds one of them. There is no way to move forward with this race on the other applicant. Even if we get denied tonight, we have a plan B. Our plan B is structured with the county. It will be presented to the BLM and we will still have a race. We have currently almost fifty runners that have already signed up. And if anyone wants to back out of one of my races, they can have their money back. But our committee is committed to controlling or to having history and, and, and controlling history. We have been doing this for a long time. We've been doing it safely. We have been representing this town. We love this town. We love the community. One day I may retire here, if I ever can get out of the Denver market. Somehow it has me trapped. But I traveled two and a half hours in a snowstorm to get here tonight. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. And I know that asking for this privilege to have a permit, it's not a right. It's a privilege. I hope it's a privilege that people earn. They don't just swoop in and take it. They earn it. We've worked hard. We've given you phenomenal press. We've put you at DIA airport. We have put you in the Wall Street Journal. Our committee has worked hard and put you in the pages of the Denver Post. You're in the Westward. Buena Vista Pack Girl Race brings publicity to this town. And so I just want to wrap up and you know, I, we can work with anyone, including Gold Rush Days. You know, we absolutely have no problem. I understand they've changed. And it's no longer under the full umbrella of the, of the chamber and it's been given to a couple, which I think you guys are going to find to be a great power couple. And they're going to be phenomenal here in this town and this community. You know, I wish the other applicant absolute best. I, I think that he is most definitely a great race director. I just don't know that he's ever done anything like what I do. I have raced, directed more borough races than anyone on the planet. Want to keep our animals safe. And we want to make sure that we come out of the gates with the proper permits. We are ready to move forward. We have everything in place. All the money has been spent. The, the belt buckles are being made. Everything is happening. We want to break history in this next race. We want to watch Guinness Book of World Records right about this town. We did it in Idaho Springs with ninety-seven racers at one start. We can do that here. We have not even advertised this race. We're at almost fifty. Once we advertise it and we lay out all the animals available, you will be shocked on what we could do and watch how safe we are. Watch how well we manage this race. So again, I thank you for this consideration. And I hope you remember the word conditional permit because that is really where this hangs. It's on a condition that you get all your surrounding permits. Even if you move forward today, it is impossible for the other permit holder to get any other access to BLM. That's it. Thank you for your time. I'm here to answer any questions and truly appreciate it.
Questions now? No. I have a question.
Yes.
My question is directly related to something that was in our packet. It was in a memo. And I'll read the line in the memo on eight, I'm sorry, August second, two thousand and twenty. I'm sorry, two thousand and twenty-two. Heather Repska and Ben Ickle received email from John LaCroy letting them know he, letting them know he is aware of the historical issues with the race in that he plans to put forth an application. So my question to you is, your knowledge, or if you remember, were you or Ms. Lightheiser notified between August second, when the email came in to August fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, that another individual is planning submit a permit to take over your historical event at that same time?
Absolutely not. We got no email, no indication to my knowledge. Because if we had have known by August second, we had dove in and we'd have been ready on race day. You know, we'd have, we'd have figured it out. I would have, I would have, I would have formed a whole nother committee to do nothing but turn in the application because I was, basically, we, we got our application three days before last year's race, folks. I can't even begin to tell you how dangerous that is. I can't even begin to tell you how many volunteers I lost. How much revenue the race lost and we give our revenue back to our racers. In two thousand and nineteen, we paid down to thirty people at a minimum of a hundred bucks a piece. So we don't keep the money. This is not a business that makes money. We have it under a business structure to protect us. But if we don't have knowledge about what happened like here on August second, how do we plan? This is going to happen to other events and I hope other events are paying attention because the code says that it can happen to you. I've read the code. It can happen to you. I'm standing here before you today because it can happen. So I thank you for the question. The answer is no. We did not get any other notice whatsoever. So in our first question in our appeal, the lack of notice is a true one. We just, there was no communication. I don't know why that would actually happen because our open, our portal of communication has been phenomenal. They could just pick up the phone and call us. They could have shot either one of us a text or email and communicated. We had no knowledge that this was coming down the bike. We definitely would have acted differently and functioned differently under the rules that the town provides us. You know, we're just, we're just challenging the fairness of what's happening. And that's really, we understand the code exists. We're not challenging the reading of the code. We're just challenging what's going on with us by not being able to function the way we should under a city code.
I have a question for you. In the packet, in the timeline, is Mr. LaCroy withdrawing his permit? But that was never circulated to anyone else. This may be a question for Leslie too. Insights on that. We haven't seen any of this before.
So, if you mind if I speak, ma'am?
I'd like for you to speak.
Thank you. So I, you know, I'm a business owner. I'm also a semi-quasi politician. I understand how laws work. I read more revised statutes than most people care to know about. I have passed laws and placed cannabis in a hundred and seventy-four school districts in my career. I have done things to save lives for kids who have epilepsy and you TBIs and, and, you know, irritable bowel, you know, IBS and things like that where you can't get medication because you're allergic to it. I understand how all this works. And I understand one of the most powerful tools we have as citizens of a free country is a cora. And so I asked for one. And I didn't mean, I didn't ask for anything under vengeance. I didn't ask for any of it. It's really of understanding. Because if what I'm being told in the background, which I ended up reading, but what was being told in the background is something was, was amiss. February seventh, race director who's managed over eighty races, high-profile races, a phenomenal race director knows very well what a withdrawal is. We understand what goes in it. We understand when you sit down and pound out these words on your keyboard, exactly what it means when you withdraw something. That means you're done. You threw up the white flag and you sound finished. In my cora, this went nowhere. And in fact, it led to a personal fumble, which we have no preview of what happened in that call. All that is in here. That is in your next set of pages. I don't know what happened there. I don't have any animosity about it, but the fairness of it, folks, for me, for our committee, we are, we are just baffled that we have worked so hard for so many years. And yet we, we, we don't know any of this is going on. So I reached out to the BLM and I asked them, I said, were you informed that the other applicant had resigned and withdrew his whole attire? I mean, he withdrew a lengthy, what is this, two pages? Maybe two thousand words. I mean, even the great detail that he withdrew his application permit to be the race director of the Buena Vista or of the Gold Rush Days Pack Girl Race. And I got a letter back from both the county and the BLM. No idea this was going on. Now, how does that affect your stakeholders? Well, they, folks, if something's done wrong and it lands on their property, it affects them. If something is not told to them, that can affect the safety of their decisions. This is important information that was withheld and I don't see it going to anyone. I don't see it going to the administrator. I don't see this email in my cora going to anyone else in the town. It just got quiet. And then time went by and nothing was said. And if you could go look, this is all in numeric order from when it happened. And so again, I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus. I'm just talking about the fairness of it. How do we perceive it as outsiders looking in? Give me a call. What does that mean? Would I get that? Would Mike, would, would, would Lindsay get that kind of treatment? I don't know. I don't know, but I do know that when they, if someone puts in a withdrawal, folks, that is serious business. If you send it to a doc go, which did happen here, everyone should know. This should not be something that's being held back from the feds or from Chape County.
Yes, Mark. I would like, I'd like to have Leslie answer also. Go ahead, Mark.
Um, Mr. Wong, you said you've done it, been doing this for many years in our town. Were you ever aware of the code language that first come, first served? Have you ever been aware of that code language?
No, sir. Was not aware that, that, um, during my race, someone could turn in an application and that is truly what's happened here. First come, first served is one thing, but when you have a conditional permit, it means that, let's say my event was here in town.
I get that part of it. I know where you're going with this, but my question to you is all those years, you never took time to look at the code? I mean, you're a businessman. It seemed like that would be an important part of your procedure.
It says twelve months, doesn't give a date, doesn't say three hundred and sixty-four days. It's a little off.
It says the first applicant, correct? Am I correct in that?
It does say the first applicant.
Okay.
But it's a conditional. Again, all permits are given and it's conditional all the way up to the date of the event. So that means you still have to get all your other permits in. So yes, I understand. I, I understand exactly why you gave the permit, the conditional permit to the other applicant, because that's what your code says. But your code also says that you have to have all your surrounding permits.
I just thought you weren't, I just thought you just said you weren't familiar with the code. And then now you're saying you, you know what it says.
I know what it says. Now, we weren't, we were not ever, we never dreamed in a million years. And I'm sure that collegiate peaks and other events would never dream in a million years that their race could be gone because of code. We just never, ever thought it. Just, I mean, I could understand if there was issues and I'm on my third strike or we did something really bad and something really horrible happened and we were brought in to be in front of the board of trustees, you know, I totally understand that. But, um, never did we thought ever that we could lose a race over that. Again, we're not going to lose our race. We're still planning on having it. We're just going to have it just outside of town. We're going to run down county roads. We're still having our race. This is still happening. We own every road with the county heading out. There's no way to cross the bridge. We already have permission from the Ramsour Bridge. That's locked down. Everything on the other side of the Bar Whipple, all the way across, past three oh four, all the way down.
That's fine. You've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. Quillico, would you like to respond, please?
Sure. Just on that, that specific question that you had, Mayor Fay, um, if you read that email from Mr. La Croix, you'll see that it is a laundry list similar to many of the emails in here and that you've seen, I believe, um, from other participants in the community. And so when I received that email from him, I read it as a laundry list accusing me of not having ever read the history or had a conversation with anybody or spoken to anyone. And so I'm a pretty direct person. And so I went straight to Shane to say, and to Earl, I believe was in the room, to say, hey, I see this. I'd like to ask him to give me a call because this is pretty accusatory of me not doing any research and I'd just like to straighten that up. And so my response back to him was, you're still welcome to withdrawal, but I believe you have a lot of misconceptions. And that was the first phone call I've ever had with him. Um, and so in that phone call and of course, you would have to take my word for it and I believe I'm a trustworthy person, um, to say, you have a lot of misconceptions. This is where we are in the process. You're welcome to withdraw. Um, probably make all of our lives a lot easier and the truth is that this, this is where we are in the process. And so you're, you know, I, and I cleared up these misconceptions. I told him the people I have spoken with. It was very clear. Um, I think to Mr. Wong's question, would I have gotten the same thing? The answer is an absolute yes. It is my job to walk an event organizer through an entire process from application to permit. And so if, uh, if there's a big misconception, of course I would have an event organizer call me. Had I had John's number, I probably would have just called him um, without even responding to the email. And I had spoken with Brad in January and so I had Brad's number. So if Brad had sent me an email like this, I would have first thing called Brad. Um, checked with my boss to make sure that that's an okay thing for me to do because I'm new in the job. But I would have called absolutely. And so, um, I had a, an email request recently with a, um, a member of the Borough Racing Community asking me that same question. Is this town protocol to call? To have that conversation? And I would say that is actually my literal job is to walk an event organizer through making sure they understand things clearly, making sure they know where they are in the process, letting them make good decisions. Um, I'd also say, to my knowledge, this would have been the first time anybody ever mentioned withdrawing an application to us in any of our history with events. Um, and so we want to talk through that and figure that out. We don't, we don't have, um, you know, the, we don't have two hundred and fifty high-performance races happening in our town throughout the years where people are withdrawing and adding and doing all of those things all the time. So we're going to be relational in the way that we handle it. I hope that answers your question.
Yes.
Um, I really thank you for the explanation. And again, uh, my work, this, there was no malice to it. It's just, it's just odd for us to see a withdrawal and not watch it happen. And we're not watching it go down. So, um, I don't know. I mean, the feds would have gone immediately. It's done. It's over. There's no discussion. Doesn't go up the wire to the boss other than the fact that it's over, you know, um, the county probably the same way. Um, uh, so if that's, it's not really in code, withdrawals not in code. And you're, you're right. There's really no template for that. And I agree with you that it would really be great to have a conversation on how that could possibly look. You know, and how, how an employee of the town can function through that and making sure that they're as fair as possible. Um, all we know is what we saw on writing and through a keyboard. And so we're at the forty thousand foot view looking. We did not have a magnifying glass nor were we present for the phone call. So I really do appreciate Leslie the explanation. I trust you. I, I have no problem trusting you on it. Um, and, uh, and I, I'm, I'm assured you can do your job and read the code and, and, uh, make that happen for us in other events. Um, so.
Do you know why the, uh, font keeps changing around in this document?
So that's a good question. So the way I got it from the town, uh, through my Cora, um, I had it in Word, I think it was, or no, it was in a PDF and then I needed to get it moved over. Okay. So that I could, you know, cut pieces of it and get it over as far as like in a box. So if you notice, I have it on different pages. So I moved it from the format you had into Google Drive. And then when I did that, it was really weird. So I backed it out and I tried it again. You know how computers are, folks? And I am not, I can do a lot of things in life, but computers may be my, um, Achilles heel. And so.
Can I just ask, do we have this document in its original form before anybody started cutting and pasting with it?
Yes. Anytime we receive a Cora request, we keep everything that is provided to the applicant or the requested.
I'd like to see that document.
Does it look like it's intact?
Oh, I'll have to go back. We're going to compare words for word and.
I'm just curious about the second paragraph. Just, I'm formally withdrawing my permit application.
That's exactly as I received it. I could pull it up on my phone from the email if you'd like to see it. Um, but that, that is, there's been no altering of that particular, any of this, so, um.
Maybe not the words, but definitely there's.
Yeah. You notice like under regards at the last page, the commas like drop down. It's kind of weird. That's just what it did. I tried to fix a bunch of them because I don't know why it stretched it. I think it had to do with like some of the moving of the words had to do with how it's set on the page in, in just a different format. I don't know that it had any bearing other than that, but great question.
Other questions?
I have one more, Mayor. Just, just a thought. I mean, uh, Mr. Wong brought up, you know, the, the code and the, the writing and stuff. And I do agree. I think tonight's the night, not the night for this, but I think down the road, I think we need to look at this code. Maybe do a little tweaking here and there to make it a little more flexible, especially for historical events that kind of have a precedent, you know, with the community. Um, obviously tonight, I mean, we have what we have. We have to make our decision on the present code. But I think going forward, I think it'd be a good idea if the rest of the board agrees to revamp this, uh, the writing in this code. Just wanted to put that out there.
I would love this to be my segue from my turn to talk. That's okay?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to hear.
Questions, is that okay?
All right.
I've got one. It looks like Peter has one.
Or? I, I mean, I can't. I just don't want to, I always want to, I just want to point out page twenty-five. It's the, um, special events calendar and report for twenty twenty-three. That was in the previous, um, report. I just want to say, you know, I think, you know, I agree with Mark that I think the code needs to be looked at and adjusted. Cause I think one of the things that kind of protects us is having a solid code and following the code, which is what we're asked to do right now is to make sure that staff followed the code, um, when making this decision. Cause if you just look at all these events coming up, I don't think it's fair to be putting town staff in the middle of these decisions where they have to remember who's involved with every single race and what personalities involved at this race and who has a split up in personalities. And that's not fair. And if you look at all of the events that are on that page, that's just not possible. And honestly, it's not fair in terms of just good governance. It's all a social and personal relationships. So like, I think, you know, you have to have locked in code and follow the code. And, um, if code is followed, then that's, we move forward. But I just wanted to, as I understand a lot of your points and, and in our hearing, but I just looking at that event page, I just don't think it's fair to look at staff and say like, they should know better and know everything that's going on, given the events they have to deal with. So just one more point.
So my question was just, so I, I'm not entirely clear. You do have a permit from the county for your, your race?
I've already paid my fee with the county and I have a Plan B with the county. So my Plan B is, is on hold until after this meeting. And, uh, once this meeting's over, we'll either continue as, as planned, as what I turned in and paid for, or I have the right to change my course. And so I will, my Plan B is I will be changing my course. Therefore, the county permits for the dates of the twelfth and the thirteenth will belong to the Buena Vista Packboro Race Committee for the county and the BLM. That's why you get those permits first before you come to a town. That is how I was taught when I came to this town and that's what I have done. So we've continued with the traditions as taught. The town permit is super important, but understanding what's going outside the towns, it's a big deal. So and the feds and the county swing a big stick. And so they could shut you down pretty fast.
Okay. I'd like to, I'd like to have Lisa, uh, talk to us, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees. So, um, I will go ahead and I was just going to go right into my presentation, but I'll have, um, Annie, go ahead and pull that up. Um, I do just, I want to say that he said, and I wrote it down. Then, um, when there's holes in the plan, you repair communication. It's really important. And, you know, as I've gone through this whole process, um, we've learned a little bit about our code and we've had some lessons learned. So I think staff is completely open. The board wants to have a work session, you know, and talk about the code and and talk about what we want it to look like. I think we're completely open to that. However, I would like to turn your attention to page one hundred in our packet. Two B says that the intent of this appeal and what we're discussing here is the standard of review is whether the town administrator properly applied the town code in not addressing a permit for Mr. Wong or the request of date. So I would very much like to pull us back to that parameter because that's what this is for. We can definitely talk, um, about who we're doing any code changes and version for that. This is separate motion to us to test that. Thank you for your presentation. I know this has been a historical event. However, we do have, um, certain parameters that we have to follow, follow that we looked at. Can you go ahead to the next slide, Annie? So one thing I just want to remind us all of, and I think you even said this in your presentation, is, you know, we have to remember why we're doing a special event permit. I really want to remind everyone here that this is town property. Lots of times it's right away. It's our liability. So we ask for permits so that we can assess that for safety, health and welfare. We, we ask for review from police services. We ask for review from AT. Very much so. Want to make sure there's not an uncontrolled fire or there's an accident because the traffic controls aren't in place. So this is really big stuff to us. It's such a big deal that section eleven, one eleven, um, has allowed us to, to have a position that actually does all a special event. And Leslie, is that position? And I am the ultimate approval source of this, but they go through many, many, many special events, especially this time. So I just want to remind us of that. It would be like if you were to put that in context. If I wanted to have a party at my neighbor's house in their backyard, I would most certainly ask them if I could have that party and I would be working with them to figure out what I could serve and how we were going to do that. It's kind of like that, right? Cause they're using public property. I just want to remind us of that. Um, go to the next slide if you want to. So there's a whole bunch of timelines. He has some timelines. Leslie has some timelines too. I took a lot of my timelines, um, out of Leslie's reports, um, and verified them. I just want to kind of go over those. Uh, first and foremost, you know, on eight, eight fourteen of twenty twenty-two actually was just, I don't think I had even started yet, but it was maybe a thought. But, uh, under the bucket, um, we actually I think had different staff and, and special events at that time as well. We did have the Borough Race, but on that same day, we received an application for the twenty twenty-three Borough Race. And that was with, uh, John La Croix. I hope I'm saying that correctly, but no, I forgive me. Um, then we received, uh, Mr. Wong's application, um, on the thirty-first of January. And the code does address, uh, in sections eleven, one twenty-three, eight, three, which I will show you, uh, on the next slide. It does show, it does address. We have two applications and it, it, it basically says that the first application that you get is the one that you're to consider. Um, then on February, uh, it's February of twenty twenty-three, February sixteenth, because we had received two applications, which was unusual to us, to be honest, to be fair. Um, we were trying to make sure we were making the correct decisions. So Leslie did exactly what she should do. She said, hey, I want to have a meeting with a meeting of the minds. So, uh, Shane Vassler, her supervisor, the recreation director, myself, and we also invited Bill Puckett, um, who was actually the town administrator with the proposed event to sit at a table and look over the code and make sure, hey, we want to make sure we're applying this fairly, that we're making the right decisions, um, for everyone involved, but, you know, for the city as well. And, and so what we came to was the conclusions that we put in emails. So we sent an email on March. And that was a formal email to Mr. Wong. Um, and in that email, and it is attached to the packet, in that email, we give him optional dates. And the reason for that is found in relevant code in sections eleven, one twenty-three B and eleven, one twenty-five A one. So there's two sections that talk about, you know, providing optional dates and it directs town administrator to, if there is an option, to give them an option with optional dates and do a conditional approval instead of a denial. So we took that into consideration when we emailed. So we took that into consideration when we emailed him with a couple of optional dates. Then there's another Section 11, 125, you'll see it in a second. We'll just pop through those quickly. It talks about the town administrator can ask for any additional information that he or she needs when assessing these permits, um, to make sure that there is safety and welfare involved. If we need to find certificates of liability, whatever we need, we can ask for. Then on the 24th, after we sent the email to Wong, he asked for an appeal and that was four days later. And so the code says within five days that you have to do that. So he met that code requirement, which we appreciate. That's found in 11, 129A. And then I just went ahead and put it in there because it is relevant to kind of the process that we've had to go through here. Of course, everyone thought we were going to have, uh, this heard on the 11th of April. But we did end up having, um, three of our trustees that would have been voting on that matter were, uh, zooming in. And per our policy, of course, you know, you can't vote if it's, if it's regarding an appeal. So we, we felt it was important to let the applicant know that so that if, if he wanted to, he could waive the other requirement that's found in 11, 129B that says we have to do it in the next two regular meetings because he had submitted three prior to the previous meeting. We didn't have time to pull it together for the first regular meeting and the second regular meeting came up. And we didn't have as many people here to vote. We could have done that because the mayor would have served as the quorum. So we could have just gone ahead with having that matter heard. But we wanted Mr. Wong to have the opportunity to chime in on that. And he filled out the waiver just like we recommended. If you'll go into the next slide, I'll just kind of peruse through the codes here. I just want, I know this is all in the packet, but I really wanted to make sure that any public that was here or anyone that was, you know, tuning in on our Zoom had an opportunity to look at these codes as well and writing. This is the one that talks about, you know, that if there's two dates, um, that the application that has been received prior in time, holds that same, and the second one comes in with the same date and time. And if they're so close in time and there's undue needs, that we have the right to basically, the first one is the one that you look at. Um, so that's spelled out in that code. Then if you'll go to the next slide. This next one here talks about, you know, imposing reasonable conditions. And of course, it talks about our ability, the town administrator's ability or designee, to be able to alter the, the date, time, duration, frequency, route, and location to that. And then also the criteria for denial also spells out that we, we are instructed, instead of denying the application, we should conditionally approve the application upon the applicant's acceptance of appropriate corrective conditions or by making other reasonable modifications to the event. So when the email was sent from Leslie to Mr. Wong, we were trying to establish, hey, would you be open to other dates? Because if you're open to other dates, we can conditionally approve this. So that was our option for this code. Go to the next slide, please, then. Thank you, Annie. Then here's the appeal language. This is the five days and the two regular meetings that you saw. Um, and, and so I guess there are some things in the code that, you know, we have collectively, we've talked about, you know, hey, two regular meetings to pull something together if they submit it three days prior to the one meeting? That's a, that's a pretty quick turnaround. And I will tell you, I don't think we've ever had an appeal of a special event permit. So this is a first for us. We've learned a lot of things. You know, I apologize to Mr. Wong because, you know, we talked about the appeal process, but I didn't get that quickly enough to you to let you know, hey, your appeal's going to be on this date. I didn't have a form. The code doesn't really talk about in the appeals section how that process works. We are already working on an appeals forum. I know that Leslie and Shane told me today they're already on top of that to make this more streamlined. We hope we don't have to do an appeal again. But if we have to, let's be organized about it. Have our, you know, have the code, have them acknowledge they've read the code. I know that trustee Jenkins brought that up. Did you read the code? Well, if we had the code attached to the appeals forum and they were able to read it and acknowledge it and sign off that, an acknowledgement that they read it, we would know that they read it. Some people, you know, unfortunately, it's online. It's in our municipal code online. But do people go online all the time? Some people don't have a computer, to be frank. We think everyone has a computer. Everyone does. And so we are thinking of these things. And so again, I reiterate, if there is a motion that we want us to look at the code and make recommendations to make it better, we're absolutely open to it. I think we've already thought of some things we would like to, to make better. But for this matter at hand, please go to the next slide. Staff is recommending that you uphold the original decision they made ultimately by me through my designee to conditionally approve this permit if the condition to change the date and time is agreed upon by Mr. Wong. If he has another backup plan that works a little bit better, he's definitely open to doing that. But, you know, we've offered to him a couple of dates that would work so that we could accommodate both events, but not on the same date. In BV, there's a lot less space than there is in the whole entire county. And believe it or not, we have limited resources when it comes to PD and other resources that can cover events. So I see why we're saying that because if you get too many events on one day, you're spreading yourself pretty thin with services that you offer within your city limits. You know, so, um, I have a sneaky suspicion. That's why that's in there and it's that way. It may not be the same with the county because the county may have more resources to do. Staff is also recommending that the board add a 90-day prior to a deadline for a response as to whether or not he will change the date or time otherwise for his permit application. Otherwise, that we just be able to deem it to mine. And that is an option that's spelled out. And I think that it's, it's really to let, so that he can move on and we can kind of figure out whether this is happening or not, because we're kind of right now just trying to figure out what the next move is as well. Because we asked if you were open to a couple of dates. Does anyone have any questions for me?
I have one, Lisa.
Yeah.
Something I'm not clear on is if the surrounding permits are due when they initially filed their application or that is why it's conditional so that they can then round those up. I've kind of heard something from Mr. Wong and not quite clear.
So I think every entity has their own deadlines and, and thought process on when those permits are due. When we get an application, we do like it to be as complete as we can have it. But we also, I think, recognize the fact that if there's a BLM permit, there may be one slot that's open, but we don't know who it's going to. But that's really not our business. It's the BL. It's, you know, them that makes that, that decision for that permit. So they may not have that when they come to the table. So we recognize that. That would be a conditional approval that Leslie would spell out in, as a condition that they would need to meet. And sometimes you would even write into that, I need to know by this date whether you've gotten, you know, for your, uh, for your deal. But does that kind of answer your question? So we like it to be as, as complete as we need it to be, aside from other entities needing to approve a permit. We've recognized, I think, that other entities also have their own permits that they, for their space. So like in this instance, we have trails that had its own separate approval. There was only so many that were approved for that trail in month of August. And maybe Leslie can expand upon that a little bit.
Sure, for the BLM permits? Yes, BLM, they have a categorical exclusion document that, that guides their actions on our, on the trails in our area. And so Sean Reynolds, who, uh, Mr. Wong mentioned a few times, he is the one who is making those decisions in our area. He's out of Canyon City. Um, and their categorical exclusion document, actually, um, they're not able to permit any events in June or July on our trails. And, which is why there's only two in August or between those three months, because there's actually none on, in June or July. There's only seven total, um, for the whole year, six or seven?
Supposed, supposed to be seven. There's actually eight. So, you know, some things they've had going on, which we've discussed with you guys about, you know, are there too many events on the trails we've run?
And so, um, and so they actually, they have Mr. Wong's, um, permit for August and then the Trans Rockies Run has a permit for August. Their categorical exclusion actually reads, there should only be one event in August. Um, and they, they somehow over the years, um, ended up with two. And that really is their, their permitting process, not ours. And, and I would say that, um, Lisa's exactly right, that every entity does it differently. If we were, if we were discussing an event tonight, um, that was an in-town event that wasn't using county roads or trails or BLM, um, this wouldn't even be anything we're discussing because we wouldn't be in the bind of one person holds this permit, one person conditionally holds this permit. Um, our, our code doesn't take into account another entity's decisions and shouldn't. But it does leave us specific to a few of the events that we do. They need multiple permits to run. Quickly, I could tell you that the county process, since I've arrived in this role, um, which was the first week of September, the same day as Lisa, we started on the same day. So, um, the county process is a very, um, we, it's a very back and forth process with us in the county. Brandy Coscarella, who oversees their event permitting, um, via the, the Board of Commissioners, she calls often or emails often and says, here's the northern part of the county events that I've received applications for. Where are you guys at? Do we see the same events? Um, I'm checking to make sure I haven't received an application for an event that needs a county permit and they haven't gone to the county yet. And so we're really working in tandem the whole time. And it's a who came first, the chicken or the egg scenario with who actually like pulls the trigger and gives the permit first. We are aware with one another whether or not this event is going to get permitted or it seems like it's working towards being permitted. They have all their information. And, and sometimes the town is the, is the entity that says, we are permitting them. We've received their payment. All their conditions have been met. I've spoken on the phone with Brandy to which she, she might say, as soon as I see the town permit come through, they will get their county. So they're, those two are really in tandem.
Okay, thanks. Yeah.
Okay.
And to refer back to your original question, Sue, it's, um, so there i- in the code, there is a certain section outlining what each application needs to include. And all of these outside permits fall under, um, Section 10 of that code, any other information requested by the town administrator. Because not every event needs these other permits, it's, it's not outlined in the code that they actually need a county permit or a BLM permit. It's just, uh, what we deem that we, that the town administrator requires for them to have the event on town.
Okay, so the give and take though, like with five-year permit that Mr. Wong City has, would that be reflected in what your give and take or exchanges with the county folks, Leslie?
The county doesn't do multi, they actually just this year have started to approve a few multi-year, um, sorry, permits. But that is specific to BLM currently.
I have a meeting on the 6th to, to grant my five-year permit with county commissioners. So the 6th of next month, I will have a five-year permit with the county if they allow it.
Okay, yeah. Um, okay, so, and listening and understanding and understand that, space train actually was assessed in terms of, uh, what Sue brought up. And so as town administrator, you even say, I'm the ultimate approval authority for all decisions made regarding special event permits in our public spaces. So, I mean, why couldn't there be a solution here? Whereas if Mr. LaCroix had, he gets all his conditional stuff together by arbitrary date, July 1st. That's his deadline. He gets it in green light. If he can't do it, why couldn't Mr. Wong still retain conditionally that date? So, I mean, it sounds like you have the power to do that if you'd like to do that.
Not to receive what the code already says about.
It says you have ultimate approval authority. You said that.
I said that in my staff reports, meaning that it all falls on me and my position. The approval that she runs through me as my designee, I'm approving. I'm signing it. That's me. I take responsibility for these points. But that's not to say that I can change something that's already in the code. So the code that spells that out, what you're talking about, has to do with it being on the same day. So what you're asking is why can't we just have them both on the same day?
Conditionally, though.
Right. Because the code says if there's more than one on that same date and time, that we have to offer a separate date. So that was in my, what's the slide for?
Well, is there, let me ask this then. Is there a deadline then for, for the conditional things to be approved? I mean, I.
We put seven in our conditions. If we write the condition specifically to say, I need to see your, your land use permit by this date, we can say we need it 30 days prior. Um, in the condition, yes. But we hadn't gotten that far with Mr. Wong's permit. We were just asking him, hey, here's a couple of extra dates so that we can assess whether or not to conditionally approve you. We, we very much so wanted to just go that separate route. As opposed to denying, we were hoping that we could get them on separate dates and still meet this code parameter that's spelled out in 11, 123, 3, uh, 8, 3.
I'd, I'd like to ask a question of Jeff. And Jeff, tell me if I'm just barking up the wrong tree, but it seems like we have a question really of who has the first permit in, because, um, John put his in, then several months later Brad put his in. Then John writes this letter saying he formally withdraws his permit, but his actions continue to suggest that he still has a permit going. You know, we lose that point of contact where he says, oh, no, sorry, I didn't really mean that. But, um, so who has the first permit?
Yeah. So I mean, my, my understanding is that the town didn't treat that withdrawal as a formal withdrawal. And that's at least my understanding. At first I've seen that, to be honest with you. So, um, I guess, you know, I, I missed the, the back and forth on that. But my understanding is, is that when, when town staff addressed that with me, he, he did not say it was a withdrawal. Is that not correct?
It was in the packet. He wrote, he withdraws in his.
If you'd like.
Does it matter whether it's writing or not?
Yeah, no, my, my question is, 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 did he withdraw it? And I guess the question, I, what I heard staff saying is he didn't withdraw that. That was not treated as a withdrawal. That's my understanding. Is that not correct?
I think that this goes back to that. Um, to help me out, Leslie here, but I think if I recall the situation here, there was a lot of back and forth about whether or not that he, I hate to even talk about his permit because it's totally separate permit and really shouldn't be talked about. But here, neither here nor there. Um, that particular permit was still trying to figure out whether or not they could be in the county. I know there was some talks with the county and whether the trail could be in a different area. So he's working with county, you're working with county, you're, you're working with us. So trying to figure out a new action to make that happen because the other permit didn't have BLM, correct? That was the requirement that we gave them conditionally. And so.
That was, I think the withdrawal question was a month before, though.
Okay, was it? Okay.
Was that, and I would say, I mean, my answer to that would be there isn't anything in code or anything in my experience, like I said before, to understand a withdrawal. And so what I, the way that I read and interpreted that email, right or wrong, that would be for you to decide for that day, was I read that as. Was I read that as he's withdrawing based on a whole entire page and a half of misconceptions? And so when we had a phone call and I said, here's where you are in the process, he was under the in the impression that he was. That we weren't listening, that we were gonna deny that we were not following our process. And so I just said, we are following our process and here it is. And then he said, then I'd like to leave my application. There isn't that in writing, you're correct. And so I don't, I haven't found anything in code and we wouldn't have had anything in process.
Nothing talking.
Understand withdrawal, but that is how it happened.
Yeah, so so, you know, y- you can take it for what it's worth, but my understanding is is that you basically, you know, withdraw. With a misunderstanding of what was happening. And when it was discussed, he basically said he wasn't withdrawing. And so, yeah, I I guess ultimately I would treat that as, you know, it wasn't a withdrawal. It isn't just like automatic. The town staff did their job to make sure he understood what what he was doing. And so that's not a withdrawal. But I do think, trust you the crazy, has a good point. And I think that ultimately. We should probably, once again, this is not about that application, but. It wouldn't make a lot of sense for the town to wait until the day of the event to find out that he doesn't have the permits and he can't hold the event. So, you know, it would be totally reasonable for Lisa or town staff to ask the other applicant, Mr. La Croix. You know, give him a reasonable timeframe to to prove to the town that he has all the permits needed to conduct the event because that actually is a requirement of the condition. And if he can't do that by a certain date, which which is a reasonable period of time, you could still hold Mr. Wong's permit. Open and and provide him with an approval if he has all the permits himself. Because ultimately, if somebody can't meet the conditions, it they shouldn't be able just to like stop everybody else from conducting an event. So I think that that would be a reasonable approach to take if the board doesn't rule differently today with respect to Mr. Wong's appeal.
Cindy, you've been very quiet. Do you have anything you'd like to ask or comment on?
Well, I'm smutted. I'm not allowed to go back to that part of it, but. I'll just swing it here. I don't know how. I'm just gonna call him John because I'm not good at name pronunciation. If he can't get a BLM permit, how is he ever gonna get a legitimate permit from us? Yeah, and and I'm with Jeff, there needs to be a timeline where he has all of his ducks in a row.
Unless he just runs off the county roads.
I am. I really didn't particularly care for. How this was handled. It started out with some information about. You saying that he was difficult to work with. And I'm thinking we're a government entity and if that doesn't have anything to do with it. Because we're not gonna love everybody that we have to work with in life. And we are a government entity and we're here for our people. And it made me that the way that started out and made me think that there was something happening in the background that wasn't. Totally clean. And I do know, because I asked a couple of other people that have had events in the past. There was a time when the rec department didn't take applications a year in advance. You didn't want them that far in advance. You were behind and you had too much work to do. And when that changed, apparently it was not changed. So it was notable to that all of the public was aware of that. There is no protection for old-time events. One of these days, Paddle Fest might be considered an old-time event and you can lose it too. I I I just don't like the way this was handled. I don't think it was done appropriately. Having the drama of not one, but two newspaper articles on drama of the borough races. I don't think that, I'm gonna say, three parties are involved here. Town, Brad, and John. And I don't think either, I don't think any three are up front right now. Don't like it. I think that Brad was treated very poorly in this situation. I think that we used a brand-new employee as. To take the brunt and and I don't, I don't think she should have to take the brunt. I just don't like how it was handled.
So you'd be saying you didn't, you don't think that we followed the procedures?
How how are you gonna give John a permit when he doesn't have all of his ducks in a row? And had doesn't have everything for his race, but you're gonna keep him pending. So Brad can't have those states. That's how I see it. There's gotta be a cutoff somewhere on John. It would be great if the two to come together and run the race together. I don't think that's gonna happen and I don't expect it to work that way. Because there was definite conflict all the way around in this. But I do wonder how long we're gonna let John carry on holding those states. And without having all of his permits and all the stuff that it should really take to make the race happen. And yes, I definitely think there should be something in our codes to protect the long-term events. That happen in our town.
Okay, that that starts reaching into an area that we're not going right now.
I know it.
Devin, have anything you'd like to?
Is it still common practice after special events to debrief with positive negatives? Instruction? Yes.
Yeah, we have a monthly special events committee meeting and all the town department heads are invited to that. And we start those meetings by doing things we can improve upon, things that, you know, we really need to work on. Things that we're great and positive about each event we've had since that last meeting.
Yeah, is that usually the event coordinators or they usually invited to that or is that?
They're not invited to that meeting, but I send an email after each event to the event coordinator and just ask them for feedback on how that went. And then I share with them anything that I currently have. If anything comes up in the next time we have a meeting, that seems like noteworthy for them to know as they plan for the next year. I would send them that as well, but I just keep all that in a file. So they'll send me back any feedback they have and I'll keep that in their file for the next year.
Okay, so. That's basically what I thought. Yeah, so it's basically, you know, there's constructive criticism and support and. And a given to events afterwards, but obviously it's not given at nine eight, nine AM of event. So I just had a question about that and I don't know. I I don't know, I see this as a, you know, obviously we've spoken about this as giving home the code. I feel staff has followed the code as best to their ability, but this is definitely a hole. And that doesn't take into account historic events, just like Cindy said, you know, where, you know, if. Paddle Fest wants to be done by like, you know, General Motors or something, they could. Or if Gold Rush Days want to be done by Climax and they put it in the morning of. Of Gold Rush Days, they could. So I feel like this is, I think, staff followed the code the best to their ability. But in the end, it comes up to us on what we would interpret. And then, you know, obviously we need to definitely. Address this, but I I feel like staff has done the best they can considering the code. But also, yeah, connecting to the other permits as well. I don't know. I see as this should go towards. Mr. Wong, and that's how I feel about it.
A comment or in discussion, we in the discussion portion now. Okay, well, I'm trying to follow the outline of. So and I'll be brief because I think a lot of topics have been based on, I've already shared. I think you guys can see a little bit where my thoughts are. So first off, I believe this whole situation could have been avoided if it was handled in a more professional, respectful manner last August. And that was before you were here. That was before you were here. That was actually when Ben was here. On the second, when Mr. La Croix sent in that email saying he was planning to apply. And that information, it was 12 days between then and the event. Somebody should have said something to Mr. Wong or Ms. Lishower that somebody else is planning this. I don't fault town staff, our current staff on that at all. They weren't here. They didn't know. So I, you know, I think our town staff's doing a great job. I've actually been to some of the special permit events that Leslie has hosted and they're excellent, much more formative than anything we've had in the past. But because there was no information shared with Mr. Wong or Ms. Lishower. During that time timeframe and they were the current permit holders and it sounds like for seven years at that time. I don't believe the town handled that permit process fairly. And then I do think when you put something in writing saying you aren't formally are withdrawing. Granted, I understand it's a phone call. In my in my interpretation, that that does say something. And if we're giving Mr. La Croix the benefit of the doubt with a phone call with that, I feel Mr. Wong deserved the phone call back then. To let him know that this was a possibility. So I'll just tell you how I feel about this now. Again, I very much appreciate our staff. I don't think the situation would have ended up this way if we had handled it differently back then and it did not involve our current staff. So I just want to throw that out there for for you all. I think you're doing a great job. But I definitely vote more in favor of Mr. Wong on this because I I feel like this was mishandled at the get-go. And I understand the idea with the code, but I think. I'm gonna do what I feel is right. So that's that's where I stand with this.
So just to clarify on one piece there, so I was the acting special events coordinator at the time. So Ben left August 1st of last year was his last day. I handled that position for about a month until Leslie was brought brought on board. It was a ridiculously crazy time for us. As Brad mentioned earlier, they got their permit three days before their event. That was when, to my knowledge, we had received all of their paperwork and insurance and payment. From that event. And so that was when their permit was granted. But, you know, it was in that week weekend alone. You know, there were two other large events in town with Gold Rush Days and Jim and Mineral Show that I was also permitting on top of my my other responsibilities. Everything that was coming in for future years and future permits, I was just pushing that off. Until we had someone in that position because we did have the special event coordinator position posted at that time. I was pushing all of that off to address when the new staff, our new staff member was on board.
Peter? I mean, most of my comments or thoughts are on the previous permit, not the business item at hand. But I think to explain how I will side on this, I think one thing I wanna specify is I think that. Town staff did follow the code as written and it's very important to me at least that. That is that we follow code and we have, and I think this is a horrible example of a hole in our codes and it needs to be cleaned up and fixed. As we professionalize more as a town, because it sounds like what happened was the previous way things were done was an informal way of doing things. And reverted back to the code, which is a formal way of doing things. And I think at least that's my understanding of all this so far. And I think that's why it's important to me for me to vote or to side with the town and the way that they follow the code in this. This particular situation and we hopefully will clean clean up the code down the road. Because the more we can take it away from informal buddy-buddy process is the way that you can actually have more transparent and representative government. But relying on the way things were done and you knew a guy and you're friends with it, that's where it leads to trouble. So I think it's all the more important to. Agree with where the town did this because I don't see anywhere that you didn't follow code as written for this particular permit. For once, particular permit and this business item at hand right here.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Peter said it very well. Yeah, and I think moving forward, definitely, unfortunately, you know, this present code needs some work. That's what we have and that's what I feel we have to make our decision on tonight. We the code that we have and I support staff on that. But I guess another part, you know, it's it's really gonna upset me if John decides to pull out. And then there is a possibility of somebody else to have an event there. Is there any way that he can give us a head nod, you know, the next soon? Whether or not he's gonna have his event. And he's not, then he's wasting a permit to go to somebody that could actually use it. That's just my thought. I mean, tonight, I mean, I would be voting on, you know, how the code is presented. And, you know, I was talking to the staff, you know, and their findings and stuff. I think it's crucial, maybe it's unrealistic, if we could find John and see what is what is your plan? You know, I don't think it's fair for him just to be hanging out there, not really give us a definite yay or nay. What if he's gonna have his event? That's not fair, I don't think. To staff, to us, you know, to the other applicants. And that's where I kind of.
And to clarify on this, Lisa and Jeff, if, because it has to do with this one particular business item is.
If.
At the current application was for this date, right? So does that, if you held it, I think Jeff is what you mentioned before is you can hold that permit open. Has that been kind of like a, like a, your next in line, like a waiting period type of thing or like a holding? So then if we found out that the conditions can't be met, then you slide into it or basically it's like a temporary hold or something along those lines? So maybe might be saying holding it open?
Yeah, I mean, that makes the most sense to me. I mean, i- if one permit, one permit holder can't satisfy the conditions within a reasonable period of time. The the next in line should be able to get that.
But if this is denied, then does that mean that's not possible?
No, 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 I mean, it did not be denied. The appeal basically means that he still has the option of accepting other conditions or. So, yeah, it's not it's not over yet.
Okay, thank you.
So 90 days would be coming right up, you know, May 13th, I guess, or thereabouts.
Yeah, I mean, if you feel that, you know, a longer timeframe is or shorter timeframe, that was. So that we could start moving on what we're doing and get feedback. I mean, we have a plan for with our police forces, our public works and all of the the people that'll be. On our side of the town.
Wouldn't it be the same thing, though, if it's the same event? So if they're preparing for John, so it would just be preparing for Brad? Technically.
Yeah, I think there's, there would be a few differences. I was just gonna speak up to say, I know it's not completely pertinent to this appeal. But a few different people have mentioned it and so, so that you can know an updated process. This is written, drafted in an email to you already from the question you sent earlier today. So Mr. La Croix submitted a new course. A week and a day, last Monday, I believe. I could look up that exact date for you. And that course doesn't require him to be on BLM lands. And that course has the same amount of impact on town and our services. And so it's very similar for us, but it's very different for the county. And so that really puts the the onus on the county at this point to decide whether or not they will permit both events on the same day. They, as as Lisa referenced earlier, the county has more services and more resources than us. And so that is likely a possibility. They are not like the BLM where they don't permit multiple events on the same day or in the same season. So that is not us at all. So if that's the case, I still would would request. And and I'm not sure, just in being new to this role and not having had this specific experience before. That I I I wouldn't have known that I can put a timeframe on it. And typically, we don't have to because typically, we're not, we're not waiting on another open event, right? So we're not going, hey, you need to know this by then. What I would say is even May 13th is probably too late for Brad. Because he's on May 6th gonna present to the commissioners for a permit and he needs to know, am I presenting my? My application that includes town or am I presenting my application that only includes county? So I do think that that for him. So I do think that, that um, for him, leaving it open. You know, I, I don't imagine and Brad, of course you could speak to this, but I don't imagine that if we say we're gonna. Let Mr. La Croix decide by June 1. If he's, you know, we're gonna see if you don't have everything in by June 1, you're out. Brad is not going to come in after that and put in an application or resubmit his application because he's gonna have already made a different decision. Based on the, the date that he gave for the county commissioners meeting.
Well, I obviously can make a rates fly in three days. I'm not good at it. So I, I would love to start and finish here in town. That is our goal. That is our history. So I would definitely be more interested starting and finishing here in a traditional forum than starting anywhere else. That is why I'm standing here for you today. Otherwise I would already asked to pull my town permit. And started my permits with the county. Now, that's the other problem I have issue. I'm the first perimenter with the county. I own the date. I started before the other perimenter did. So he's not getting that permit. I was first in. Because that's where you go first. You go to BLM, you go to your county, you do your surrounding permits. My permit was turned in in January. I paid my fees already. It's already done. He doesn't have a road to run down. He doesn't have a county trail to run down. They're, they're probably not going to permit two, two particular events at the same time. So we go back to conditionally permit. It, it's not there. It is not there for him. Just, I just, you know, the other problem we have is um. Let me see if I want to go down that road. No, I don't. So um.
I would just say, just, just to clarify for you guys, the actual process of the county is you do not own a date. So they, they are happy to permit multiple events on the same day. I do not know if that means they will permit two borough races on the same day. I can't speak for them in that matter, but I do know that they oftentimes permit more than one event in a day. That's not, that's not something they look at as long as they have the resources to cover it.
So, so also when you're running down county roads, you also have to get permission from your partners that have borders to those roads. So if this La Croix runs down a county road, he touches BLM, he still has to get permission from BLM. He can't run down that neighbor's road. Or run down that road and not have permission with the connecting entity. So wherever his race goes, I don't know of a road out here that doesn't touch BLM. Unless he's going west. Is he crossing 24? Do we know?
Okay, let's, let's move on.
Yeah, I just want to jump in real quickly. The conditionality question. Does our code say, because I, my understanding is you could have it up until the day of the race, but. Are we violating our code if we call to give a different day, like we needed a more updated date or? So I think Jeff, you mentioned that.
No, the, the, the code silence about that. So you can put conditions on a permit and, you know, it's totally reasonable for. Lisa in, in her, with her authority over, we're not, we're not appealing this other permit. So, but she's, it's totally reasonable for her to use her authority and say, okay, I want you to meet this condition by this deadline. Fact that it wasn't in the initial one. Doesn't, doesn't, it, that's still okay to do that because it's reasonable to do that.
Does anybody want to? Sum, sum this up?
Yeah, what's the procedure? So if we were to. Grant Mr. Wong uh, his appeal. Would that deny Mr. La Croix his permit? How would this work? I don't like, I don't understand what the other choices.
Yeah, it would not affect the other permit at all because it's not part of the appeal. So. You would basically, I guess ultimately if you granted Mr. Wong's uh, appeal, you'd be having. Two borough races in town on the same day.
Which we'll have to review to our resources to even determine whether or not that's. I mean, there's still a review process regardless. But according to the 11128 relocation section. At any course during the permit. I can revoke an event permit if they don't need conditions. So. So actually, you know, we can adjust this. But again, I, I just remind you that this particular appeal has to be adjusted purely with. And I know it's wrong, but. Did we apply the code that we have currently to the situation? We can talk about fine tuning the code and making it better. And I think we're going to do that regardless. We're already working on it, but. Just. That's just what I want to remind everyone of.
Would we like to uh? Have a motion to approve that, that. That the staff followed the code.
Well, what would that mean?
We mean, maybe we could go on to the next question, which is whether we um, accept their rec, staff's recommendation. To um, conditionally approve the permit. If a change in the date and time can be agreed upon.
Could you, could you explain that again? I'm confused.
So I have a staff recommendation. So staff is recommending to uphold the original decision made by. Sure to conditionally prove this permit if a condition to change. By Mr. Wong.
I want to ask Mr. Wong a question. Changing the date or the time of your event is that even possible? Does it work with the?
No other permit available. So the BLM will not allow another permit. This is it, folks. This is the only date. This is where we are. And because I do sit on the county permit as well. That's the date I turned in. This is the traditional date. Of the 12th and 13th. So allowing us time to mark the course and, and go over the course, clean the course, prep the course. And make sure it's a safe event. We are running out of time. Um, I don't know how. I, I believe and I don't, I, I, I think that BLM allows, it takes six months to get a permit. For a first timer. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I do recall reading that somewhere in their federal code. That a new permit has to have time to be installed. I'm sure there are variances for that or acceptances for that, but we're already outside that window. For Mr. La Croix, he still does not even have a BLM permit in. It hasn't even been filed. He just recently filed his county permit. Just recently. So um, and that, that was uh, he was following the protocol given to him by the town. So he wasn't quite sure where to file, who to file with. And he was going back and forth with these court emails and he got a really great direction from Lindsay as to what to do next and how to do it.
If you won't, if you won't agree to a change in the date or the time. Then does that leave us any choice other than to just reject the permit? Totally?
You, 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 all you're doing tonight is deciding whether or not the town administrator. Uh, made a proper decision and then you, you can leave it at that and he, and then Mr. Wong is free to. Inform the town administrator that he, he won't accept the, the conditions and that will, that will take care of it.
Okay.
So you don't need to, you don't need to go beyond the, the decision in front of you.
Okay, thank you.
And Mayor. In the county, in the, in the municipal code. It says that I have to be informed by the town. Administrator. My letter didn't mention the town administrator. My denial letter has nothing in there whatsoever. It, it didn't.
It wasn't to deny it, that's why. We were giving you alternate dates and we were going to see where you were at.
They, well, they denied my date. Correct? I mean, I'm, I'm, I just, that's, that's what I understand. And that's what I understand what code is. Code says that, that it is to come from the town administrator. So I don't know if we could pull that up or find it. Maybe I'm missing, remembering it, but I would love to hear it if someone has it. But it gives specific instructions in there who tells who. You know.
I can respond to that. That's, that's accurate. The decisions is, is to be made by the town administrator. My understanding is, is that the town administrator made that decision. And it was communicated via, I guess, um, it's Wesley who's the um, in charge of these permits. So. Um, town administrator has authority to delegate, you know, notice of a decision. If, if that's not the case, you know, Lisa can respond.
Email that was sent. Informed you that we had already received the application for date. And time that you had put in and the other one was the first one received. And so per our code. Were directed to give you. A choice. I can't even deny it according to what the code says. I have to give you optional dates. So that's what we did. The email was to let you know. That we gave you some optional dates that we pulled off with our staff. To do that because the, the, the baby that proposed was already taken. But if you actually look at that email. I don't even think it says conditionally approved or denied. It was giving you options to dates, but. Then you came back with the appeal.
I'm trying to find it. Uh, do you happen to have the email?
It's in the packet.
Well, someone could read it.
I'm gonna make a point here. We're, 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 we're having uh, some procedural issues here. It's not supposed to be a continuous back and forth. Uh, I've kind of been a little slack here, but at this point we've had arguments from both sides. And it's gone back and forth a lot. Usually you just let Mr. Wong make his argument. Lisa respond, Mr. Wong provide a reply. Um, I, I, I feel like we're getting good information, but I feel like we're going to just continue to do this forever if we go back and forth, back and forth. So my suggestion would be. To let the board of trustees. Uh, discuss this, make a decision. If, if they want to ask more questions, that's fine, but I don't think it's, it's a good, a good procedure just to have everybody speaking out whenever they want. About various issues that they forgot to mention earlier. So that's just my suggestion to make sure we keep this thing somewhat in control.
Great, thank you.
So, so I see the staff recommendation, but is that what we're really sort of voting on here or is it just whether town? Acted appropriately in terms of the code? What is exactly that we're deciding?
So you're, you're basically deciding whether or not the town administrator. Made in a, made the proper decision under the town code to reject the application with the requested date. And then to offer other dates. And then you have the authority, if you, if you agree. To basically impose some kind of a deadline for Mr. Wong. To communicate whether or not he wants to accept the other date. I don't think that's going to be an issue based on Mr. Wong's statements. He's saying he's not going to accept another day because he can't. And so, I mean, that's just a formality to be, so. You're really just looking at whether or not Lisa's decision was appro, was, followed the code properly.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Make a motion to that effect? Okay, Mark, please.
Kind of my own. No, we're gonna quit. No, wait, wait. Okay, I support the town administrator. His decision to give the first applicant the permit as per town code. And you have um, Mr. Wong uh, a 90 day. Prior to event deadline for response as to whether or not he will change his date slash time. Otherwise his permit application will be deemed denied.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay, um, is there someone who'd like to second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have Jenkins on. And did you get the motion? Okay?
I think I will re-listen to the tape.
Okay. Does everyone else understand what we're voting on? And um, I, I think we should do a roll call vote.
For the discussion.
Sure.
Yeah. The problem I have with this is that there's some things that happen that aren't code that are like. That I feel. Conflict with our decision and that, and one of those is that. La Croix e- emailed staff with the intent of taking that date. And the, the current uh. Holder was uninformed. None of this is in code that says you have to or not, but I feel like this is a. Point to think about, um, is it in the code of other permits, conditional in the permit? And I feel like that's another issue. Uh, if, so, I don't know. I have a hard time with that.
Like the conditional being the date and time?
Date and time with other permits with county and BLM as well. And that doesn't seem to be a clear thing written in the code as well. Which seems to be very pertinent to this particular instance.
And I was just like that. I think the motion you made, if I'm not mistaken, you said. Staff is, this is a really weird motion, but I think you said was correct in offering the first permit. When the business item I had is a second permit. And, and just the 90 day. Like the, am I not mistaken? Is that what we're trying to, it's not, the first permit is not really in question right now?
True.
So we should be doing is a motion of, yeah, once Mr. Wong's application came through. The way that staff handled your application, once it came through was all appropriate and accurate. Is that it? Is that correct?
I support town administrator decision to give um, the permit as per town code and leave. Um, first applicant part out of it.
Yeah.
And then did that layer.
I think so. I just said, I just didn't realize that until afterwards that, that you said the first one. Not to when Devin was making his comment, but I think. Questions I have also are about the first permit, not the second permit.
Do you accept that amendment?
Yes.
That's the second or since the second.
On the second one.
Yeah, okay. So as amended. Further discussion?
Mayor, further discussion to trustee Rose. I get that, but I think that's for further discussion, you know, some of the. When we started doing this, this present code and fixing, I think a lot of those questions we could, we could, you know, um, cover at that time.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, I agree that with that, but I feel like this is, this is definitely a hole in this code that we need to make a decision on. Which I feel like. Is our decision to decide what the end product of this issue is. And because it's not. I feel like this is a. Thing that we can decide as a board. Whether we want this to happen or not. Because we. It's, it comes to our attention. It's comes to our, our choice on whether. You know, I don't, I think staff followed the code the best they could. I think this code was written. A long time ago before we have a million events where people are competing for the same event. Uh, which hasn't happened before. And I think that we have to make the final decision. And not. I, I don't see it as in that specific, whether they follow the code correctly. I see as it is, what is the final decision in this? And maybe that's not the way to look at it. Maybe that's not, but that's the way I look at it. So.
I support Devin in that, in his statement, because I believe that Mr. Wong was blindsided. With how things were handled back late August and. I understand this code thing, but we did something wrong that time that was not accounted for. So I don't know what's more important at this point and I want to do the right thing at the end of the day. And I believe that's to give him a chance to put on his race if he can conditionally get everything done in the appropriate time. With the idea that um, if Mr. La Croix cannot.
Yeah, the business item is the appeal, correct?
I'm just explaining my reason for why we'll, no.
Okay.
I have the right to do that.
So. Given that we couldn't go back in time and use other information and whatever. Um, we're not making the decision on, we're on Mr. Wong or Ms. La Croix. We are making the decision on whether town. Um, followed code and did it appropriately. So in the end, I'm not going to say it was handled right in the beginning, but in the end, code was followed. So. I'm. Thinking to move forward to do this correctly. We vote that town handled it correctly. Right afterwards, we can make a motion that. Um, La Croix's stuff has to be filed. All of his permits and everything has to be filed on at this date. Or his permit is denied and according to Mr. Wong, he wouldn't be able to because he's not going to be able to come up with that one permit. So then. Mr. Wong would be able to have the race if, if Mr. Mr. Wong would be able to have the race if if Mr. McCroy was not able to get his information in, let's say, two weeks' time. Because he's got to be able to have time to plan his event and do what he needs to do. And I do think that wasn't handled totally correct, or we wouldn't be here tonight. And there is definitely a hole in our system that after we make the motion on that, we can make a motion on we want town to take care of this. So we do not have all things fallen through the cracks. Just an option, just an idea.
I I like that. I agree with you there. The other reason I mentioned this is about the appeal is even if we side with the appeal, that would just mean there's two permits the same day. It still doesn't really address the real problem. Correct.
That's changing the date and the time. We act like we're doing Mr. Wong a favor, but his event doesn't work. He needs that date for his event to work. So offering him a different date is kind of a joke. But so that's why I think, yes, town did follow through on their code, which is extremely faulty. And then right after we vote that through, then Devon, I, or whoever else agrees, can make a motion that we need that that other guy's permit. We need all his stuff in two weeks, or his permit will be denied. And then the permit we'd be giving would be, we would be able to grant permit to Mr. Wong.
Yeah. I want to say for the record that I don't like how this is.
I don't either.
Is worded. And I feel like this is an appeal, and I don't feel like I'm building on an appeal. I feel like I'm voting on whether staff handled it correctly. So it's it's a weird situation where I feel like I can't vote whether I think they should have the permit or not, which is seems to be the purpose of this appeal. Instead, voting on whether staff handled the appeal correctly or handled the situation correctly. So it just it seems very confusing, and it's making this hard to figure out.
Well, I just want to be clear, because this is a legal issue. What you're voting on is whether or not the decision by the town administrator to reject the permit based on the conditions and the criteria in the town code was correct. And 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 to offer the extra other dates under the provisions of the town code. Not whether town staff didn't handle it properly in on August of twenty twenty-two, or they should have emailed people or provided notice. I I I mean, you're really looking at the criteria in the code and saying, you know, was that the correct decision based on what the code language says? And whether the code language needs to be changed to address these issues in the future, that's another issue. And we could certainly take that up, certainly provide some suggestions, but that's that's not what you're deciding tonight. So you know, the town administrator decided to basically reject the application for the date that was requested. And then she offered other dates. That's the only thing you're looking at. Was that correct or not under the town code?
And Jeff, just to clarify, because of the the language here, that's just because of what the previous decision was the because my understanding is if we agree to the staff recommendation there, even using the different day, time, or whatever, that's just because it's kind of the legal language of our code. But it still just holds the permit open as possibility if conditional permit of previous permit is not met.
Yeah, you know, yeah, and I I guess, you know, you you write your decision, and then basically what what you've done is you've basically, if if you decide to uphold the staff decision, like if you do, you know, then basically what will happen is it'll just be this this decision that the town administrator made will still be there. Mr. Wong will then have an opportunity to accept or reject it. And the town administrator could go to the other applicant and say, hey, you know what? We need to make, we need to let us know if you're going to satisfy the conditions or not by this date. And then Mr. Wong's permit could be held open in that interim period. And and then if the deadline is not met by the other application, if that's what the town administrator wants to do, you're not really directing her to do that because you don't have authority to do that right now. But then Mr. Wong would have the option, if the other applicant can't meet the conditions to basic to to basically conduct the event as he's requesting on the date he's requesting. But this is complicated because it sounds like the other applicant is now looking at not even using BLM property, so maybe he can still hold the event in the town. I I that's just kind of beyond the purview of this hearing. And I know it's it's a, everybody wants to solve everything, and it's really difficult to make everything work in some situations, but I would limit yourself to looking at the specific decision that the town administrator made and whether it's supported by the code or not. And and unfortunately, I don't think we can solve everything, but the town administrator has some administrative authority behind the scenes to have some conversations and try and make things work. But I would limit your decision to what's before you tonight.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor, right? Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'd like to ask for a roll call vote, please, Paula.
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Kinga.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
No.
Trustee Rowe.
No.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Okay, so that's three or two, two. Yes, the motion passes. Okay, do we want to go farther along this path with the ninety day or dealing with the other the other applicant? Or can we leave that to you, Jeff? Make a suggestion to us.
Jeff, I'll let you chime in here. I think that's more appropriate.
Yeah, I think you basically ruled on the matter before you, and I would basically leave it at that, and the town administrator can can use her administrative authority to deal with other deadlines.
I've written down everything that you guys have said. So I'll be meeting with Leslie and we'll work through. Need to work.
Okay, so and you'll be communicating with Mr. Wong.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you for all your time with this. And obviously, we were deliberating heavily about it. And we'll be making positive changes going forward. So.
Well, thank you very much. Do I have a moment to say something real quick?
Yes, please.
I I really want to thank everyone for their time. If at any point you need a conversation about this, I'm happy to have it. There's anything I can give to the town to help you guys understand how we stand as the event planners and and race directors, I'm happy to give it. Just reach out to me. It's real easy to find to find me. So we're happy to help build a really great event process here for BD. So I do understand what the vote was today and wish it was a different favor, but I don't matter whichever way it went. I think we were still in stalemate as to who has the event. So hopefully he can get the permits. And if he can't, I would can't wait to hear from also make sure that he gets his insurance. Probably the hardest thing. It's harder to get insurance than it is even to get a BLM permit. So if you don't know how to do it and you're dealing with animals, it ain't going to happen. So, okay, thank you very much for everything.
Thanks, Jeff. Let's go ahead and try to finish the meeting rather than taking a break. So we're stand up if you'd like. So the last thing on the agenda is the public improvement agreement for the Boulder subdivision. So this must be Joseph, I would think.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll be extremely brief. I think you all know that as a normal course of our business processes and procedures, standard PIA agreements have shown up in your consent agenda. Given the conversations that this board has had with the applicant about this particular development, Lisa and Mayor felt more appropriate to have it as a business item to make sure that if there were any questions you all have you guys have to to air them. So the PIA that's in your packets, my staff report starts on page one twenty-three is a standard PIA offering to use a letter of credit as its financial surety mechanism, which is, as you know, one of the two sort of normal methods called out in our code. The applicant has not moved moved forward with the request for using a bond. So with that, I will halfway answer any question you may have, but I'll stop there.
With a letter of credit like that, do you, is there some process through which their financial stability is assured?
The bank.
Okay.
Goes through that process. So the bank will not issue the letter to us without going through that.
Right.
And we have a standard template and everything for the wording that implies with our town requirements for the bank.
Questions for anything on the public improvement agreement? About the lift station that was going to be part of the original plan, but now isn't. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, the applicant has reengineered the site to change the elevation such that a lift station is not required.
That's been wholly vetted through our engineers.
It's gone through eleven rounds of.
But because it has been one of those things. And we also had a meeting to discuss. We should pull this one out just to give you a brief.
And a lot of graphs in it.
That was one main question, and I think you were just talking about it, but just in different ways is the because previously this is for like storm retention, right? This previous location. So is that what the infiltration gallery is hopefully going to absorb all of that if there's any runoff or? Well, so because before they were lifting it, is that what you were talking about or? The applicant's property has always been and is still private property. The the function and is served practically as a function of its geologic shape is is that it's a bowl and it has collected the stormwater flows from surrounding areas. It has not been its town given purpose because it's it's private property, right? So the applicant has had to demonstrate that as they develop this property, they have sufficient stormwater facilities and engineered capacities to deal with stormwater flows both from their site, but also given the elevations of the surrounding areas, how are they dealing with stormwater flows from surrounding properties? And that's part of why the the engineering review is so challenging was to figure out, are they appropriately sizing their stormwater facilities?
Other questions?
Okay. All right, so if there's no further information needed, then the question is whether we would approve resolution number twenty-eight series twenty twenty-three entitled the resolution of the Board of Trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado, approving a public improvement agreement with five hundred North Colorado Avenue LLC for the property known as the Boulder subdivision of Buena Vista, Colorado.
I still move.
We have Cobb, Lucretti. And let's do a roll call vote on that, please.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Kinga.
Yes.
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Great. Okay, so now we're at trustee interaction. The energy to interact.
I just got one thing. I've been kind of watching state bill one twenty-three.
Yes.
And I had a webinar yesterday, I think, with CML. And it sounds like it's moved from one voting from the House. Joseph, you probably have to kind of watch it. And now it's going to the appropriations.
Are you referring to one twenty-three?
One twenty-three, thank you.
One twenty-three or two thirteen?
Two thirteen.
Two thirteen is what?
That's two is the ones. Yeah, that's the one. And I've been watching that closely. I know the commissioners are against it. It's it's a land use. The the governor Governor Polis is kind of driving the show. He wants the the state to have more control over land use decisions. And you you know, tackles and stuff like that. So I'm still watching and everything, but it's Joseph kind of probably speak to it a little more for me as far as how it might affect our community.
Yes, from what I understand, the the original hundred and five page bill has undergone a series of amendments, most prominently a fifty-five page amendment that was introduced a couple of weeks ago, a week ago. The the bill seeks to do a lot of things. The most controversial of them are for certain municipalities that would allow the state to dictate what types of housing are allowed where. Regardless of local zoning codes, it would also nullify prohibitions in HOAs against things like ADUs or certain types of housing. Buena Vista would not be under its current form of the bill, would not be subject to those zoning changes or those zoning rules from the state simply because of our size and our location, just not, that doesn't apply to us. We would be subject to the reporting requirements that the bill proposes. Very similar reporting requirements to the first bill you mentioned, bill one twenty-three from last session, which we we if we want to participate in portable housing funding that's coming, we need to be able to provide the reporting requirements that that dictates. So the tangible effects on Buena Vista tomorrow, if that if it's twelve to thirteen were passed, probably not that drastic. I think it's the controversy stems more from the the statements that it says about local versus state power. So if it's your question.
Thank you, Joseph.
Yes.
On on that note, I just and Mark, I think I mentioned this to you, but I forgot to send you the PDF, just that there was a Denver Post story today just saying that that bill sponsors actually are prepared to kind of gut a lot of the key provisions of the bill that would remove all zoning changes and instead direct cities to just study their housing needs, which takes a lot of the pump out, but but it's definitely a local control issue, but I'd be glad to hear it. And also also sounds to me like BD is doing a lot of the things they're recommending. They'll recommend spell by throw a code on it, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the things that they would mandate like ADUs being a used by right in all residential zone districts, we already allow that, right? So there's a variety of those things that we already do. A lot of the reporting requirements that they will require are things that we already track. So I'm not sure that the reporting requirements represent overly burdensome requirement for the town. And if anything, in light of proposition one twenty-three, I think it was, I can't remember the terminology, but that affordable housing bill. We probably have an incentive to do that tracking anyways and report that in our test. So.
And there's one more thing I wanted to bring up about. See that next time we have conversations. Just wonder if there's anybody that ever been in discussion about a safety corridor going through our community on that highway. I see that in a lot of smaller communities where, you know, you're warned and like fines are double. And I wonder if that might help, you know, with that traffic, especially in the summertime, going through there and the sidewalks and everything. I don't know. See, Doc, you have any thoughts on that? That's it.
Second, Trout Creek Pass is probably one of the more dangerous roads around. You know, it's not in town, but. Peter.
No, I've been out of the country.
No, I've been out of the country. I guess I missed the. Water work session, is that online to watch? Like, it's just.
Yeah.
Okay. That's the only question.
The only thing I'd add, and I don't know if this is okay or not. Obviously, I. Outside of this, I put events on, it's part of my my job, and if. There is any feedback, like for the control rewrite or edits for. The code, I'd love to offer up any suggestions to get it leave it, if that's appropriate, I don't know if it is or not, just let us know, but um. I do do that type of stuff for a living, so happy to share what I know about that. Like, Snow, I just got back from doing an eight-hundred-person race, so.
Eight hundred.
Yeah, so I can maybe help there. If you guys like, if not, we'll understand, no worries, but just wanted to.
Right. Developer.
Um, yeah. Let me.
Okay.
Okay, maybe I might be able to pick up from there, maybe not. I didn't realize that the planning director report was in the consent agenda, and I did have a comment on it.
Okay.
And it was to comment on number six after the sex successful special meeting. I personally didn't think it was that successful. The input was supposed to be from the EDC and developers. I felt that the EDC totally took over that meeting, and. There was a lot that we didn't get to hear from our water advisory board and stuff that I would have. But because we ran out of time and. In that. Of course, the EDC is for development, and we heard from the developers and we heard from the bank. And despite him saying otherwise when he contradicted me. It it was that the. Upper Arct water conservancy would rather work directly with town than developers. And I did not make that up, that is true, they would rather work with us, they will work with the developers. But then we have to take from the developers, and so it's like a three-way thing instead of working direct. The reserving water idea is. Is anew, it's a concept we haven't used before. And I think that we need to take this slowly and not think of it as the answer to all our water concerns because. Water is finite, and we need to protect that, and. I'm still going back to, I think that we need some kind of a time limit, and even if it's seven or ten years, if. They can't develop in that timeline, let it go to a developer that can develop it. If we're waiting ten years and we desperately need housing now. And I do not think a seven to ten-year time span for development. It's definitely more than doubling it from our original three years, and it is giving them a chance then. And Sue had made a comment in that meeting that. Town is taking the risk, it's not the development and the bankers that are taking the risk, it's okay. So so I do think we need to slow down on that a little bit, and. It's nothing that the trustees have voted on for town to pursue at a rapid rate. And I do think we need to slow down and check into that a little better before we just think it's the answer to our prayers. Ben. I have three things, that was one, and now I would like to make a motion for the rec director and town staff. To fix the holes in the code to protect old town events in the permitting process, and I would like that to come back. To us within a couple of weeks, if at all possible. So I'm making a motion if anybody wants to second it.
So we got Swisher and Rowe. And they can't make the changes, they can suggest the changes, right?
So what I envision is we would have a draft and bring it back and show you. You know, basically, we've got plenty of feedback, I've been taking notes from all day. And I think we had talked about many things that we would like to see better in that code anyways through this whole process, so. We will certainly draft something and bring it back as a business item for you to look at, and then. If we still have some fine tuning and tweaks for us, we can. Take a look and bring it back the next meeting, but I think we'll work it that way.
Yeah, we'll definitely get on it.
This session, I don't know if we need to work session it.
I don't want it to go way out there and have something else happen as something else.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I'm gonna do a roll call.
Yeah.
Yes, can I ask further discussion before we move?
You may.
Just wanted to check with Rec and see if that guy fits into your schedule, can you guys?
All in favor of that?
I.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Cindy.
My last thing in our work session that was open to the public for the comp plan. It was for slow, responsible growth. And with. Water the way it is, we don't know how town wants to grow. So for slow, responsible growth, so I. Don't know if we would like to put off adding. Any other major subdivisions until after we get the results of the comp plan to see what. Our community wants and how much they really want to grow.
So, an idea or a motion or?
It was, it's a idea conversation, but, you know.
Now, would that be a review of new major subdivisions? And continue with the ones that are already in process?
Well, the ones that are already in process are in process, that's, yeah. But any new that come in, and I don't know if we have any new coming in, but you definitely could not stop what you've already approved.
Yes, so. I, I'll be, I'll chime in a little bit here, lots of moving parts right now, as you're all aware.
Yeah.
We've got lots of things going on, lots of changes, we've got staff. We've got lots of ideas. The future is bright, and we're gonna make. Eight out of limits, right? But. You know, we may put that sort of discussion, we just say it has been a thought. And I think that we would have that as a discussion point. At the next meeting. And it would be more of an executive session discussion.
That was my, that was my three, except where I was writing before, I might have had four, but, you know.
I could count on you.
Thank you.
Just for my part, I just wanted to mention that a few of us went to the. The north safety, a north end safety complex groundbreaking last week, and. At that, we met. Regional rep, as I'm sure a lot of you know, but at any rate, she did say that the Boys and Girls Club. Congressally-directed funding proposal has gone to the next step, that it has been prioritized by both. Pickle and Bennett, so I didn't know if I meant to to let you know that, at least, but I didn't think about it until I was thinking about this interaction today, so. Anyway, so I think that's really great news, it doesn't guarantee anything, it's kind of like where Shane's. And Leslie's grant proposal is, but it's still good news, I mean, it's it's still moving that through the pipeline. And the other thing I wanted to just mention is that I had the great pleasure of hearing my colleague Devon Rowe. Play in the Alpine Orchestra this Sunday, and it was a really lovely concert, did a great job on the trombone.
Was it the second trombone?
Congratulations.
Sorry, I missed that one.
That's okay, yeah, I've been doing it for eight years now.
Wow, it's a really, really great concert.
Thank you for coming.
That's it.
Impala too.
Oh, that's good.
John.
Devon.
I just have one more clarification question about. The borough thing, is La Croix, will you? Have a definitive answer by May thirteenth that he is moving forward? Alright, cuz.
Lisa, just so you know, I, it looks like the county hearing for both of their applications is June sixth. I know Brad said May sixth. It looks like it's gonna be June sixth unless Brandy mistyped that in an email.
Okay.
So that would be that neither of them know about a county permit until after June sixth.
Which means we would be already be denying Mr. Wong's permits, so. Cause not as good. We, we could leave his as still conditionally approved.
Is that the direction from the from the motion, because it seems like if it, if he didn't change the date by the. It seems like it would be denied.
We needed nine days prior to the event, he needs to give us a decision.
Which would be May thirteenth, correct?
Yeah.
So.
The months have different days, it's thirty-one, thirty.
Close to.
Oh, close to. Close to May thirteenth.
Yes, which means that he would be denied before. It is determined by the county, which means we could possibly have no borough race on Gold Rush days. Alright, let's.
Let's push ahead.
So we're, we're at, where we have more than ninety days in advance. Can you break the COPA rule for that ninety days until after we find out who gets? The county permits? Is that? Too out of line?
See, it's part of a motion, Jeff, so you tell me what, I mean, it's part of what we voted on.
So, was the mo, did the motion actually direct that he had ninety days? I thought that wasn't part of the motion, did I miss that?
Say ninety days. I don't think we went there with that.
Yeah, I thought we didn't do that.
I believe that was part of the motion.
The first paragraph, I think.
Now I gotta look it up.
Yeah, Mark, what did you write down?
I, I didn't, I thought we left that part out of the book, or you guys left that part out of the motion.
We revised it, we revised the motion, but I don't know if we did it to ninety.
No, my my recollection, I could be wrong, but we we just, we just dealt with the single issue of whether or not the the town administrator properly approved. Or properly decided the app, the permit application, and then. I said that we're gonna have the town administrator deal with the administrative deadlines. Behind the scenes with her own authority.
Yeah, right.
Okay, well, that's good news.
Alright. Yeah, I was, I thought that ninety days was in that motion, so.
Pretty sure it wasn't, but we can have a recording.
That's, never mind then.
Was second.
Really confusing right for a minute.
I listened to the tape first thing in the morning.
Alright.
But I don't recall ninety days, Peter's amendment had to do with the second application. Not ninety days. CML is having a, a spring outreach meeting, it's gonna be in Salida on May twenty-third. At ten AM, I don't know where yet, but. Those are usually pretty interesting. To meet with the CML people and know what's going on.
And I, I believe that. The guy was early on to it, I did or not. We were gonna send an email on to all of you.
You did.
You did, you did.
Yeah, yeah.
But now today, he's good.
Yeah.
I would really like for Joseph, he has a couple of things that I've been dying all night for him to share.
Joseph, would you like to speak?
I think you'd all like to know that today the State Housing Board, uh, has unanimously voted to grant one point three five million to Carbon Street project.
Yay.
National Forable Housing Grant Program. So, yeah, very exciting, brings a total subsidy that that product up to three million dollars for the town.
Awesome news.
Yeah, so excited to gather with you at your next meeting. Driving restrictions and having that certainty behind us now.
Right, is there still anything else out there in terms of grants?
We have a congressionally directed spending request through Representative Patterson's office. We don't expect to hear on that for a few months, you know, but they told us, so. I think we will, we will need to articulate language in the due restrictions that. Leaves the door open to how we will deal with future subsidies should they come in without us.
It's great.
And then also, I probably got an email. The part has to be signed, it'll be. He hasn't given us a final date yet, but it's not really big of a name. He's gonna be working to help us during transition. That's kind of why I say we might have some discussions. But I think there's a lot of reasons for those discussions, not just for staff. So, you know. I think that that we have some good candidates for planning director. And I'll be probably talking to some of you at least to be a part of a mock or commission. Just wrote up a scenario for each of the applicants, they'll be invited in to present this as staff report. Presentation with a mock panel as part of that interview process. So, but just to give you some ideas what's going on, we're working through all of that, and. So just need you guys to trust and hang in there, and, you know, I think there's lots of. Times changes for a reason, right? So. We worked through it. Well, Miss Doug, Doug's been a great part of the team. The planning department has, you know, worked very hard, has wonderful skills with GAS. So I'm excited for him to get to move into career more, he's utilizing his talents there. That's the fullest, which I think is great, is great for him, and. Do you make the bad? We did want to let you know that as soon as possible, and that'll be. Announced to employees as well very, very soon, but we wanted to make sure you guys heard first.
So when the chief and the, the police chief and I and three others were judges at the National Civic Speed. The kids had to write essays on what did they think they could. Recommend for Buena Vista, you know, and how could they pitch in, and they got some really interesting ideas. So that's why I invited the two tonight to talk about vaping. But, you know, the, all the kids had pretty good ideas, so I'd like to circulate those to people, and then. You know, as I can, I'll invite them to come in, great, talk to their parents, get them to come. Anyway, their parents were thrilled that they were invited. That was great. So, Philip, got anything?
Oh, boy, now, the airport request for congressional directed spending. TDS, also was sent to the next.
Oh, good.
So.
Fuel Island?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I saw that today.
Oh, good.
Good. That's it.
You guys got anything more?
Tomorrow morning, it's gonna be cold, but it's bike to school day. As long as there's not snow on the ground, we're gonna go for it. So. Too, yeah, yeah. And then this Sunday is Keeping Beauty Buena, the neighborhood cleanup day. You can still register online to participate. Might not be guaranteed a t-shirt, but we definitely ordered extra t-shirts. And we recently got our furnace replaced in the Aspen Room site. That project wrapped up last Friday, and Amy, Amy can tell you some stories about the process, if you have a question. It, it was eventful.
Oh, yeah, we had a pipe first, but the plumbers were on site and we got it repaired, like, within the hour. So it's great news that it was while people were here and caught it. But it was a chilly day on the Aspen side without the heat. And, yeah, we're really grateful for the grit we got. Yeah, and the heat on the side, yeah.
Well, good.
Do you have anything else to add?
Okay. Annie, got anything else? Paula?
I am gonna add, on behalf of Dean, if he was here, I know he would tell you this, yesterday they did their program every 15 minutes.
Yeah.
And it has to do with drunk driving, and they tie it into prom, which is this weekend. I strongly encourage you to reach out to Dean and have him share the video that he took. One of the things they shared, you know, was the incident that happened in front of the school, and there was, of course, a death involved and things. And one of the comments that I heard at town hall was that the kids weren't taking it as seriously as what they had hoped. The video that Dean put together and his wife put it together, it took it a lot of steps farther. The young man who was the drunk driver, they showed him being booked at the sheriff's office and sitting in a cell. They showed the, the one girl that they took the jaws of life. You're sitting here watching the video, and the girl is still in the car with the jaws of life. Heard the hospital going to the CAT scan. The hardest part is the mother reading the son's eulogy. Absolutely amazing what our staff, JP County EMS, the hospital put together and the school. So if you have a chance, we see Dean, ask to see the video and thank him for what he does, because it is amazing. And one of the things that Dave Wopie and I talked about, because he would see, because when I stopped the video, I said, oh my gosh, your son was in this. And Rowan was one of the people who passed away. So seeing kiddos, you know, and things, it really hits hard, but kudos to our police department in EMS. So. Yeah, and let me just say the notifications on that were awesome. I got a text and email and a phone call. I think there might have been a hang glider coming by or something too, but it was really, I feel really, I'm just kidding, but it was really complete. So from that Everbridge. Yeah, I, I was just amazed how, how in-depth and the detail they did on that program. So, yeah, so we got, we got it.
Get ready. Yeah.
Sean have something in the audience? Over there.
Sean, yeah.
I was in the audience.
I was watching you the whole time.
Yeah, we noticed, Scott.
I, 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 I just give compliments to everybody here. This team, guy back there, those two guys back there. Leslie, even though I can't understand anything she said, is I don't know where she's from originally, but yeah, I agree with Shane that at special events, the rep team in general, they're really efficient, really effective, really thoughtful in the way they're approaching, you know, the relationship with our department. But I think with the community too, and, yeah, congratulations, Joseph. Boulders, wow, good job, I mean, I guess, right? And I, yeah, give kudos to our review engineer team, Gary Well, for being stubborn and thorough and requiring all of the information for, you know, these stormwater things that are really challenging to understand and challenging to engineer and making sure that we're building things the right way. You know, that's, that's maybe the consultant, you know, he's gonna go above and beyond because, you know, he's, he's it's kind of spotlighted that, so I think you did a fantastic job. Yeah, and I guess, you know, if we don't have a planning department, I guess my problems are solved now. We don't. Bless BB Day this weekend too, as well, so awesome. They have a couple of good projects in the parks and then a fantastic project at the cemetery that they'll be working on, so. Anyways, yeah, yeah, so.
Hey, well, serial motion dude.
Don't make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we got Rowan Cobb again. All in favor? Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Jeff.
You earned your money. Have a good night, everybody.